And one would have known the difference, right?
That was the best part.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, no. Honestly, and I noticed you beep quite a bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
You want a soda?
The pirates can drink at the beginning of the show, I can drink at the end.
Cold ones in the fridge if you don't like it. What kind do you want?
Tyler, if you want some entertainment, that's entertainment. The pirates can dance, we'll sing. Then you can see at least a star there.
Yeah, I took a tour around.
These bikes are on too.
Oh goodness.
No, it's good.
It's a lot of fun.
Well, it is four o'clock. Let's call for the order here. Council Edmund, would you like to...
Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity we have to meet this night. We are thankful for the opportunity to represent the citizens of Gardens. We ask that thy might bless us that we might have their best interests in mind as we make decisions this night and we be able to do it wisely. We are thankful all thou hast provided for us and we say to this humble name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
This is pink and red.
That was a reminder to everybody to turn the phone off.
Everybody, guys.
Should be great. My clerks all day.
You need to make sure your things are on. Mine was not.
Is it on or not?
Mine was not on.
That's on now.
You're there. All right, so... Any additions to the agenda?
I just... In the... I'm under food security. The included in that five on sixteen oh four, and I have a question about that, but this really relates to that conversation on food security, so I thought maybe... I was looking for questions, but there isn't one on this agenda, but maybe we could stick it somewhere and so I could ask a question about that later on.
Why don't we just make it as part of the discussion and just deal with it then?
Yeah, okay.
Just make a note of it.
Yeah, maybe we can, all right.
One thing that I would like to add is right here at the top of the meeting, if we could take a few minutes to introduce one of our new victims. This is Tyler, and he's gonna be our new intern. Jeff, did you wanna introduce him for us?
Sure, I'd just please introduce to council Tyler and Grayson. Tyler will give a little bio of himself, but once again, the town has been fortunate to participate in the municipal internship program. This time, we are sharing with the county, so we won't have him here the whole year. We'll probably do by every month to six weeks. We'll go back and forth between the town and the county, and a lot of that time, hopefully, work on some shared services projects as well. So we had a raft of good candidates for this position. We're really excited Tyler was able to come, and I'll let him do a little intro of himself so you get to know him a little better.
Hi, my name's Tyler Grayson. I'm twenty-three years old. I was born in Edmonton, and I spent my childhood in Shore Park. We then, our family then moved to Calgary, Alberta, where I spent most of my teenage years. And I spent the last four years in Lethbridge, completing my bachelor's degree with a major in political science. In my third year, I was pleased to have a class with Lethbridge councillor Jeff Kaufman, who taught a class on local politics and government. And he inspired me to pursue a career in local government. And he recommended to me this internship program, and with that, I applied and was successful. And you're in today. Thanks.
Welcome.
Please welcome to you.
We've heard great things about you.
Yeah.
And honestly, we don't bite.
Any... much. Any other additions to the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
For discussion, all in paper? All right. Adoption of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to peruse. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes. Counsel Barnes?
Mm-hmm.
All in paper? Okay. So we have a few delegations today. We'll start with Ryan Dick from Orsk. Let me just pull up my notes here. So Ryan's gonna, has a variety of things to talk to us about today, specifically the MDP recommendations. And so we'll turn the time over to you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to be here today. I'm gonna talk briefly about the forthcoming municipal development plan that we've been working on, and then my boss Lance here and Mike Burles, senior planner with the Orsker, also gonna talk about a subdivision application we've had in town. I've inherited this project from Perry Newfeld, so I'm happy to be taking over for the balance of the work here. We've got an MDP committee whom which I've met with once. I think we're making good progress. We have the draft together. I'm not sure if council got to see that as part of the bid day.
Yeah.
So I guess I'd just like to outline what the municipal development plan normally means to a community, but I'll try and keep it short. If council has any questions or comments on the draft, we could talk about those. So a municipal development plan is really the overarching policy document for a community. It informs development decisions. It must address certain things like future land use servicing, and it may address other things like economic development and financial matters. It really can be whatever municipality wants. I had sent over a document, and I think the reason for this, just an interpretation and some of the legal opinion on what the municipal development plan really is and where it fits within the context of land use planning. And this arose from the last committee meeting. I think the committee was kinda had questions and was struggling a bit with the wording and the syntax of how we write these things, how we establish the policies. So it's important to note when you're looking at this draft that it really is that it's an overarching, high-level policy document. And while we must have regard for these policies and the decisions that we make, we're not ultimately bound by them. They're gonna inform, like I said, the adoption of other plans, like area streffers plans, area redevelopment plans, and ultimately the land use file, which is your regulatory tool. So we draft these things at a relatively high level, and that is to preclude legal challenges and to make it so we can draft more specific policy and regulations in our other documents. And I think that's sort of the cursory review I was hoping to go over, maybe if council has any questions of where we are in the project and where we wanna be.
Maybe you may want to explain a little bit the steps that will be taken once this is approved, because you need to have the public involvement. Maybe you want to talk about that aspect.
Yes, thank you. I think where we left off with the committee is that we're going to get together a final draft and perhaps bring it back to council, to make sure council is comfortable with that draft, and then go up to the public for consultation. I think we had sort of contemplated at least one public meeting, maybe before summer.
June.
June. June is the goal, and I mean, there's probably opportunity to, for ongoing consultation. We, you know, we usually do poster boards, and we can leave them in a common area and make opportunity for people to look at what we've done and provide comments throughout the course of the whole summer. So if they miss the one meeting date, it's not a big deal. And then if necessary, we could do a second public meeting prior to getting a draft together and bringing it to council for first reading.
Thank you.
Thanks, one desk, please. Once this plan is approved and adopted by council, I wanna know how much life is still in it. Can we still make changes? Do we consider this a living document as well?
Yes, sir. I think that'd be the right way to look at it. You know, oftentimes with these documents, you know, you need to step back, and within a year, it's already obvious that we need to make some amendments. But as I said earlier, I mean, we drafted at that relatively high level, so as not to preclude, you know, very particular decisions, but if necessary, by all means.
Sir.
Ryan, just reading through this, there's quite a few similar elements to when we did our strategic plan. I was just wondering how this relates to the strategic plan the council developed. Did you use the strategic plan in developing this, and what is the relationship between the two?
Yeah, I understood that the ICSP, is that right?
ICSP and the strategic plan.
And the council's strategic plan, really, they were the impetus for informing the majority of this document. Those are non-statutory planning documents, and the municipal development plan is a statutory planning document. It sits at the top of the hierarchy, and although I wasn't really involved in the drafting, the majority of it yet, I understood from reading the background that, yeah, the ICSP and the strategic plan, you know, they sort of, they were the impetus behind the majority of this project.
The ICSP, just for council's information, is the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan that was adopted in 2009, I believe, was the date of that? Somewhere in that range.
And we have to use that to get our grants, right?
We did at that time. There was a stipulation on the, I believe it was gas tax. It might have even been before 2009. Now it would've been 2009.
And this is a document that we have to have. All communities over thirty-five hundred in the province have to have one of these. I believe our last one is from 2003, so it's about time. Usually, that's sort of the window, ten to twenty-year window, and then we need to relook at a lot of this stuff.
And the process that we've gone through this, as the committee has basically put this together at this point, they'll come to council with a final draft at some point, and then council will adopt that as our municipal development plan?
After the public...
After the public...
Yeah, I think it could go the way that, you know, we get a final draft that we're relatively comfortable with, bring it to council for their blessing, just to make sure there's nothing in here that's really out of line, and then go to the public. I think I'd probably, that's how I'd see the process unfolding.
If I might, just in addition to that, that's why it's on your agenda tonight, is for your perusal, to provide feedback to the representatives on that committee, which are Mayor Cronin and Counsel Edmunds, to provide, to make sure that those policy statements are within council's vision as well, so that we can get that draft on the next...
If you don't mind, when we set at that council, we really looked at the policy fairly carefully, the wording of them, the intent of them. And I think we have reviewed them fairly extensively. So if you read those with the intent in mind and the wording in mind, it's pretty well the wording that is used in a legal document at a higher level, but it's not as binding as when you have a policy right here. It's a different kind of interpretation of language. So you will see there is some may, some shall, some should, so all those mean something. And we had asked that the meaning be explicitly included with proper definition, so that we understand what it means.
That's a good idea. One of the, as I was going through it, there's some pretty, I mean, it does kind of feel like a legal document in a lot of ways, and it's pretty thick. Has everybody had a chance to go through it in detail?
Detail? Well, I mean... I've read it over. Hundred ninety-eight. Believe me, it's not in detail yet.
Yeah, council of ours, if we... We read it just about three times, too, didn't we?
I definitely read it.
So what I maybe suggest is, because we only have three days from the time this was put onto our drive, is that maybe we give ourselves a week till the thirteenth to come back with any additional feedback and bring it before council for next hour.
My one question is, we're so close, probably, I mean, I don't know, maybe we're not close, but to getting an updated MGA. Do we wanna maybe bump this a few months, see if we can't put any of the significant MGA changes into here? Or, I mean, obviously, we can't continually put things off, but that seems to be significant enough. And if this is every decade, it sounds like we're gonna solidify a municipal development plan a month before we get a significant MGA change, perhaps, right?
Well, I'm not perky to the timeline with respect to MGA updates. I think it often goes that, you know, if we waited for the province on everything, we'd be waiting for a long time.
Right, I get that. I get that, yeah.
Pardon my... Mr. Chairman, that's been discussed at the committee level, and we've tried very hard to anticipate any changes that might be coming down. We've all participated in those reviews, so we don't anticipate that this document will be non-compliant with the MGA in any way. And if there is, we would have to make an amendment. We'll have to review it no matter what time the MGA is...
And I think that comes back to what Counsel Barnes said earlier.
Yes, that's where it was coming from. If it's a living document, we need to change according to the MGA, then we could do that without any problem. That was my only real concern.
We also talked about the impact, maybe the success catching one, which general plan might have on this document. And we kinda look forward with those changes in mind since we participated in the reviews of those documents. So we didn't go blindly establishing the policies.
Lovely, good.
So does that sound like an idea then? We give ourselves a week to go through this?
Review it on the thirteenth?
Do you want a recommendation?
Do we need a recommendation to bring it back on the thirteenth?
I'll just put it to...
Put it on the agenda.
Do we need a little bit of time to kind of go through it together? Or you wanted me to...
But I don't know that our role here as council should be to do that. I think that's more the committee role until it comes back with the final draft for us for approval.
Yeah.
Maybe to help you understand, the committee is made up of a fair amount of people with diverse backgrounds, right? There is elected officials on it, there are citizens at large, there is members of the education world, and there is people from previous councillors that had worked on such a document. There is members of the business community, so it's quite widely representative of our community.
I was comfortable with reading...
Again, I echo your statement, so this is the purpose of a committee, is to bring the document forward as they see it, let the council review it, make any comments on the changes, and then take it back to the committee.
Yeah, I think that's the better way.
So let's plan on then having that put on the agenda for the thirteenth, for next Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay. Ryan?
Yeah, that sounds great. I think we had our next committee meeting set for a week after that, wasn't it?
Good.
Why don't we do this one at the end?
Counsel, any feedback? Because I haven't had a meeting in between. We could incorporate that, or at least have a discussion at the committee level if there's any council feedback, and then hopefully get a final draft going before June, when we unveil it to the public for the first time.
Counsel Bangle, just to address your question on that, they're wanting to be able to take their first presentation to the public in mid-June. So if we're waiting until the end of May before we're sending any recommendations back to the committee, then that whole time...
We'll still have two weeks, though, but they'll have a committee meeting.
They have a committee meeting after our next town council, after our town meeting. So we send recommendations back, and they have a committee meeting, and then they can bring it, they'll be bringing back the final draft.
Okay. And just question on the public input, will the public be able to suggest or, you know, make recommendations for amendments? Like, are we gonna have, like, a...
Is that the idea?
That's the purpose of them, yeah.
And then to go back to the committee for review. Okay, good.
Maybe to speed up the process a little bit, maybe if, before we come to next council, if we could channel all our questions to Marion, and so we all get them distributed to our staff for reflection.
That's a great idea.
Because I think that we'll come better prepared to discuss those points.
Yeah, that sounds good. Well, it's nice to meet you all, and I'll look forward to working with the committee and yourselves. I think Mike and Lance are, if it's the right time, are gonna talk about the subdivision application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's been a number of questions about subdivision application. It's come up in a number of presentations, and so while we had the planning guys here, we thought it might be a great idea to hear from them and where that's at, so...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Mayor, and fellow councillors. Got a deep ass from the old folks home to come back to see you. Been around here for so many years, I've run out of fingers and toes here at council. Thank you for having me down. It's been a while since I've been at the Carstens area, and just so you don't throw rocks at my picture in the post office, I've actually been reassigned to Carstens County since the first of July, so I'm back down here again for an instant. So it's nice to see some familiar faces, Dennis and Counsel Bangle, so thank you very much, and our member on our commission here, Mr. Edmunds. Mr. Chairman, I've been asked to relieffully give you an update as to where we're at with the Gordon Act in subdivision adjacent to the Lee Creek Golf Course. That application was commenced in 2010, and we had a second application put in front of us in 2011. When subdivisions are approved, under the Act, the duration or the life expectancy of that approval is normally twelve months. Now, the Act itself, talking the MGA and the subsequent regulations, two of the subdivision development regs, allow a subdivision authority to extend the approval beyond the twelve months. So as you're well aware, we have our realtor friend here in the audience, you know, the economy went south there in 2008, 2009. A lot of the expectations developers had here in the province and in North America and across the world actually went sideways in a lot of places, and a similar situation here as well in the province of Alberta. So this, the subdivision, really didn't get beyond its original approval, and it was originally dealt with here and had seventeen conditions, which is normally an inordinate amount of conditions on a subdivision approval. Normally, we have a lot of the information that had been put in the conditions in front of us prior to rendering a decision. In this instance here, the decision reflects a lot of the information that was still outstanding at the time of the decision being rendered by the subdivision authority. So it's my understanding, Mr. Atkins, has been working his way through this inordinate amount of information to get us the answers that were asked of him by the subdivision authority at the date in 2011. Obviously, when you run out of time, you ask for a time extension, that goes back to the subdivision authority, and they add their prerogative, can you grant an additional amount normally till six to twelve months? And that can be applied for again after the expiration of that original extension here. The extension we have on the file runs till the twentieth of August this year, so after that, we'll be looking for another extension if Mr. Atkins doesn't complete the necessary conditions that were attached to the approval. So again, we could be revisiting this matter here a little later on in the year. Now, having said that, I guess that will be a decision of your subdivision authority. Now, having said that, and I'm not sure how many members here on council sit on the authority, I believe you have a elected number of officials as well, some lead members sitting on that board, that'll be a decision of that board unless council holds the prerogative to grant extensions. And I'm not sure if that's been delegated to council here or it's been set down to the subdivision authority. So if it is council, you folks will be, I guess, given that opportunity to review this application and see if you wish to extend it beyond the twentieth of, pardon, August here this year, here, to give us more time to be completed. Having said that, if you don't, the subdivision becomes null and void, and Mr. Atkins would have to reapply for another application and start the process over. It's important to note, if you don't grant an extension and he has to reapply and that subdivision's turned down, let's say in the next go-around, the appeals on subdivisions adjacent to water courses and to highways lies with the province of Alberta. The town of Carstens loses jurisdiction, and at an appeal stage, your subdivision and development appeal board does not have the authority to hear a subdivision appeal on a new application adjacent to the river. So that is what they call a deemed provincial interest, transportation corridor or a water course. Province owns the bank shore of any water courses in the province, and any subdivisions adjacent to a water course here, the appeal board in the province is the municipal government board. So any appeals will have to go to them. You're dealing with the outfit out of Edmonton and a sub-office out of Calgary, so foreboding knows what comes of a decision here from that hub. The other thing that we have in front of us as well is some legislation that was recently adopted back in January, it's Bill 27. It's the Flood Recovery and Reconstruction Act. We're waiting on regulations to that enactment. It's my understanding here there has been some overtures passed on to the town here for representation, possibly on that committee to form regulations. And obviously, here, the flood of June last year is at the front of everybody's mind rather than the back of everybody's mind. You usually have a flood event here to trigger all the unhappiness and the disaster that does come with the inundation of floodwaters. Now, Mr. Chairman, I have brought a copy of the Bill 27 for your perusal, so I've got twelve copies, which I'll leave here. And then there is a government overview of the Bill 27, and some discussion about the regulation consultation that's underway or being banded back and forth by the province here with respect to Bill 27. And there's a question and answer section here, approximately six or eight pages, I'll leave that as well. The intent of this here, obviously, is to ensure that municipalities in the province don't build or propose to build in the floodway. And I'm gonna try to kind of explain some of these terms here to you. You've heard of floodplains. These are areas that are inundated by floodwaters from time to time. A floodplain is made up of two components. One's called a floodway, the other one's called a flood fringe. The floodway itself here is the major channel which the flood moves water through a community or through a reach of the water course. It normally is defined by the depth of the water, at least a meter deep, moving at least one cubic meter per second. So there's that depth and a volume which delineates the floodway. Then you have the flood fringe, which is areas that obviously where the floodwater spill over, it's a little less intensive in terms of volume here in velocity and depth. The province itself here, under this new legislation, is prohibiting development in the floodway, and it will allow municipalities or the governance of this land use file to possibly consider the development in a flood fringe. Now, having said that, I was fortunate enough here to get a tour of the proposed site with Nolan earlier today before the meeting about an hour ago. So my colleagues and I were out, and we walked around. I have seen some concern there with respect to the subdivision here. Some of the roadway that's proposed is now nonexistent and actually covered by some of the waters of Lee Creek. So having said that, these are some of the concerns that were brought forth here from the planners as well as your administration about the location of roads. And again, when we create a subdivision in the province of Alberta, we have to have a legal need to access, so that's by way of a roadway, and in some instances, in a rural area, the way of an easement. But having said that, if we don't have a road, obviously, to get to the lots there, then we have, obviously, some concern with registration of land titles off the... So these are some of the... So these are some of the things that we'll have to take a good look at if and when we move ahead with future discussions on that subdivision. And that will be obviously part and parcel of your determination if an extension to the subdivision is warranted if we get that far here in August here this year. So having said that, that's kind of a brief overview of the subdivision itself here and where we're at with things. I'm not sure if council and committee level here have any questions of old mayor or administration here. We'll here obviously enlighten you here and bring as much information to the table as we can today.
Can I just ask you something? There is a road that has been built recently that comes to the highway. Are you trying to say that that road maybe is not where the design, the original design was?
Actually, there's, if I may, there is a proposed road that meanders mostly towards the south and west corner of the subdivision. It actually creates a cul-de-sac at that point of all their turnaround area. It's that area and that immediate location where the road itself here is actually shown by way of little survey flags out there. And some of the flags are kind of gone downstream here. So we want to see an evidence of where this road's supposed to be made of and then it disappears into the creeks and stuff here. But the one that we have here is a road that's kind of what was originally approved by the subdivision authority that comes up to the.
Are we not? No. Should that have been built with the proper process?
Well, in our, in my experience with this way here, subdivisions are conditional in a lot of instances on a development agreement being entered into. So what that means is the fellow that develops the subdivision is the beneficiary of the sale of lots. He takes the risk, he gets the benefit of the sale. But he also has to incur the cost of that benefit. So the costs here are spread across services here and lighting and road construction. And you'd have to have a development agreement here in order to recoup the cost or put out the money here that are necessary to develop the infrastructure to sustain the subdivision. Now, having said that, I'm not quite sure where we're at with the subdivision itself in terms of the development agreement. Normally, we would have that signed off by members of council as well as your administration and then there's a security that's normally taken. And then that would ensure that the roads or anything else that are built here are built to a municipal standard. In some instances, if you go to a fee simple subdivision where there are lots created, the roads and all the infrastructure in that subdivision over a period of time after the warranty period expires becomes the municipality's responsibility. You maintain it. In this instance, I believe here there's some contemplation of a condominium plan being registered and all the infrastructure and stuff like that would apply with the condominium association or with the developer or and the maintenance there too here would be some by the condominium association. So having said that, depends on which way this subdivision is registered. If it's registered by condominium plan here, the infrastructure remains with the condominium association as registered as a conventional subdivision. The infrastructure will apply with the municipality after the warranty period. That's been established and the development agreement expires, you take over the infrastructure and the railways that are associated with it. Now, I understand, Mary here raised her hand, she may have some indication or more specifics on the development agreement and the process there.
Mary, would you like to address that? Yeah, just for council's information, we do have a very comprehensive development agreement that was signed by and agreed to by council, I believe, in about 2010 and 11. That is in place. We also have a fairly comprehensive land sale agreement that both of those documents were drafted by our legal with the understanding of the nature of the property and council's concern at that time. So that is in place.
Councilor Bangry? Mike, you say that part of the road, proposed road that meanders up the bottom end of that is now underwater. If the developer puts up a flood retention wall, okay, and it changes the flow, the natural flow of the river, what's the responsibility downstream?
Well, here's a couple matters here. You're rather the two-edged sword. We've got about four-edged sword here, Mr. Chairman. If I may, first of all, any alterations to water courses in the province are going to require approval from Alberta Environment or people here that are charged with the Water Act here. There are also going to be federal approvals necessary here in the fisheries and ocean people or whatever is what's left of that department now. I understand that that acts pretty heavy by defense. We'll have some same matters. It's a fish-bearing stream. So you're not just going to go in there and dump a bunch of dirt here and start moving water courses around. And then my experience here is that once you start messing with the river, the hydrology or the regime of the river changes. If you put some groynes or deflection, riprap here around the banks here to armor the dirt here adjacent to the water course, you're actually deflecting the force and the nature downstream of the river. So it's Einstein's formula, it's an equal and opposite reaction here. What you do upstream here is going to be subject to more erosion here downstream. And it's my understanding that we may have some issues down on the campground here and by way of the flows right now. So having said that, it's kind of hard. We got a little one-page map here that Nolan afforded us here. We walked around and we saw a little bit of this stuff. What I'm suggesting is that we go back as your planning staff here. You folks had some aerial photography done at Leve last spring. And what we'd like to do is see if we can take some of the survey information that we've received from Martin Geomatics here and superimpose that on some of your recent air photos. So we can actually see where the river is with respect to the proposed subdivision, see what's intact, what isn't intact and what may be on the edge. But I would encourage folks here to have a look down there sometime. I found this a very eye-opening experience here with Nolan taking me down there. I just talked from a bulk here and a lot of paper. But I did have my eyes feasted this afternoon here on the actual situation down there. So I can speak a little more knowledge of what's down there and what is in there. But having said that, the visitation sir today is to just let you know where we're at. We're in the process of trying to meet some of the conditions that were placed out here for more. If those conditions aren't met by the order of, as I indicated, there'll be a need for a time extension to keep the subdivision alive or afloat. And that'll cross your desk at that time if Mr. Atkins here makes application for an extension. In the meantime, I have some information for you here for you to digest if you're eager. Excuse me, MF, I'm able to here. I'll answer some questions. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. That's kind of rare for myself. You're very. If there are any questions, the Madam Mayor and council will be more than likely to know if I can.
Councilor Bangry?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hey, Mike, I'm familiar with the area. That's kind of my walking trail that I follow regularly. And as you know, the nature of water courses, that they're always changing.
Yes, sir.
And so it means that the floodway and the flood fringe is not going to stay in the same place, even though it shows it at a certain place on this map. I'm just wondering how, from a planning standpoint, how do you deal with that? Is that kind of why you want to look at the aerial photographs and kind of reestablish the, you know, if the floodway and the flood fringe is, you know, changed from when the original subdivision was applied for?
Mr. Chairman, the council agreed. That's an excellent question. I'm glad you brought that up actually and I did anticipate that being discussed here. This is a document that I pulled out of our archival files. This is a study that was done and published here in 1992. In Southern Alberta, in the Orsk region, there were three communities that were the subject of this study. One was the town of Pincher Creek, the other one was the town of Fort McLaw and the third one was the town of Carstens. What this was is a program known as the Canada-Alberta Flood Damage Reduction Program. It was a joint program undertaken by Alberta Environment and Environment Canada. And they looked at the reaches of each of the water courses in a number of communities in the province of Alberta. The three I mentioned here are the ones that were looked at in Southern Alberta, also the city of Lethbridge. And they did some mapping. Now, that mapping, sir, you are correct, was done in 1992. We have maps showing the floodway and the flood fringe. And to be quite honest with you, you're correct here in your assumption here the flood regime has changed. It's probably moved a lot downstream. It could have gone a lot wider. And it moves as the river moves. So that information is kind of a snapshot in time. And anybody here that wants to hang their hat on and say this is gossipy or is mistaken because things do change. And with the river regimes, apparently given the fact that we've had a number of floods here, 1995 blew the whole town of Pincher Creek right off the map there. They had to do a bunch of riprap here and mitigation work. And now we have an issue where they show a whole bunch of flood fringe and floodway areas in the town. And because of the armoring of the banks, this thing just shoots right through town. And the first guy that gets it is the poor guy in the empty of Pincher Creek in the first bandit. And that guy is just not a very happy camper these days here. So that flood regime has changed tremendously here. So all the information we bandy back and forth here is inaccurate. What I would suggest here, and the only way to get Bill 27 off the ground and to do this regulation properly, is to actually remap all the flood information, not just for this community but for the province. And when you're talking flood and how you roll out mitigating floods and what you do to, you know, make floods a lot less costly is you need to be based on what information and the information we have is accurate. It's archaic right now. So your question is a good one. And the information I wouldn't really hang my hat over at this point in time. You know it's there. You know it exists, but how accurate it is.
Mary Corwin?
So you're saying that we really should have a remapping of those different areas, broad areas. Then would you suggest then, or is it correct to assume that elected councillors and mayor should make an effort to let the government know that that should be something that should be done?
I think here in order for us to alleviate, we'll never alleviate all the floods. Like we've got climate change. I was not a very, I thought that was really a flying the sky kind of thing. The more I see the snow outside and everything else here, something's going on. Climate's changing here somewhere. And I think here that's one problem in the overall thing of things. There's a bunch of other stuff that can happen. As Len's gave me an article today about making sure that we leave some vegetation here, you know, in place to hold the erosion or hold the dirt in place. You know, you're logging out a lot of areas here and that's creating a lot of sloughing and flooding and everything else. There's other matters about development or non-developing areas, you know, stuff like that. There's a number of problems with this approach here. But one of the most important things is information. You're only as good as the information you have. And it would be of benefit here to have updated information. We have updated air photos, obviously, to go hand in hand here. It'd be nice to have updated air flight information out there. So yes, if you guys are at convention and stuff like that and you're talking to your original counterparts, they get some back from information like that would be of value here for everybody involved, including your planners.
Okay.
Councilor Edmonds?
If this one section of the road is now under water, there's going to be a lot of environmental damage done further down the creek as that dirt is carried on. Is that enough for us to put a stop order on any further construction of this road?
I'd rather not go there at this point. I think that's something. Sorry, I'm dancing here even though I'm not shaking here. So I think you need to discuss that with your administration on that. And that may be an in-camera matter here for you folks here to deal with at this point in time. And again, there's legal implications and stuff like that. So I'd rather not go there at this point. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Appreciate your time.
Mary?
Mr. Chairman, I just have two things to add to Mike's presentation. One of the things that we've as administration have been very vigilant in is having any documentation that is provided to us, subject to the conditions of the subdivision, reviewed by a third-party engineering firm, which we've used Associated Engineering. Obviously, we're not engineers. We want to ensure that any information that is provided is sufficient to meet our needs. It may be stamped by an engineer, but we still want to make sure that it's sufficient to meet the conditions. The second thing is, Mike alluded to, I just received actually from Albert Tecko, who's with Associated Engineering, an invitation, basically for us to be aware that the province is now looking at developing a floodway development regulation task force. So that goes to what Mike was saying about the regulations around Bill 27 have not been established to do it. And that could substantially change any development in those flood-prone areas, we'll call them. So we are aware of that. I don't know that we have expertise to sit on this task force, but we may want to ask, maybe we have a representative applied to sit on that task force because we are in a community that is affected by flood-prone areas.
With that, Mayor, is Len, are you sending somebody to that, to sit on that? Are you applying for somebody out of work to sit on that meeting?
We haven't, at this point, received any information on that. And we don't know what the planners of Volcano sitting on that is. But it's something we could certainly do.
This is a notice that came out of the Urban Development Institute of Alberta. And I don't even know if they have opportunity for additional members, but the UDI is sitting on that task force, so that helps.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll leave this information with your administration.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and look forward if you have any other questions to come down again and see the folks that are sitting here, to look at your faces. So thank you and I appreciate the water.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mike.
From then, do we need a recommendation maybe to have administration draft that letter there? Don't you think?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind drafting it if that is helpful or if administration wants to draft it.
I would suggest that the motion should be to recommend to council that a letter be drafted. Thank you.
So make that a motion. All right. I will make a motion that we recommend to get council a letter be drafted to then to, who do we send it to?
To legislation.
To legislation, anyway, asking that we.
Regarding Bill 27?
Yeah, okay, regarding the Bill 27 and also I think the remapping of the floodway in that area.
Requesting.
Requesting the remapping of the floodway.
Any further discussion? See you now. Fall in favor?
Pass.
Sure. I am assigned to do it.
I guess that's between you and Mary. Mary doesn't have a lot to do.
It's okay. I will start it.
Away.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is, we had Leonard hooked in to see us here and talk a little bit about electrical issues. bit about electrical issues.
Thank you, folks, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I was glad you had the water.
Drive safely. Let you run away, and thanks again.
Oh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I was asked to be here to discuss the electrical issue for Rosemary Daly, affected her on December 28th, 2013. I believe the letter was already sent at your last meeting by one of my coworkers, Jared Edwards, who responded to that call at 11 o'clock that night for partial power. Upon review, it was noticed that what he saw was the voltage was the same up to the meter, there was no partial power. She was advised at that time to contact an electrician to look at anything within inside her home, our responsibility. As the electrical problem stops at the meter, we do not carry on past that, as it could end up being more issues and whatnot, but that's just the way it is, so. Upon review of this, and then also looking at the latest, I pulled all the data from our OCR foreclosures up here on Fourth Street, and the data showed that there was no trips on the system that day that would cause an outage to the town. The trip, there was one recorded on the, sorry, I couldn't print it out in time to bring it here, but it was, I believe, the end of October, and then the next one was the 11th of June, sorry, the 11th of January. So during that time period, there was no trips on the system period. So as for the issues that happened with inside her home, in all honesty, your guess is as good as mine. I can't honestly say whether there was the issue on our side of the system, the issue was inside the house, there's way too many variables at play to make a determination. And looking at our bylaws, where it states in our utility bylaw, we don't generate the electricity, we only distribute, bring it to the houses, we have no control over the quality of what it can or can't be. That's something that's beyond our control.
Did any members of council have any questions specifically for the letter?
I was just going to ask, you mentioned about there were some issues with the power, what were those times, you said?
I want to say the October, the end of October, 28-ish, I want to say, I don't remember, and then the next one was, I believe, 11th of January.
So this happened just right around Christmas time, just after Christmas?
Yeah, January 11th.
No, October 28th. December 28th, according to this.
Oh, yes, for the day of Christmas, yes.
So you're saying during that time, there were no issues?
There was nothing recorded. On the OCR that's up here on Fourth Street, just across from the Air Place, councillor Barnes, that unit records any and every instance, whether there's a high voltage, low voltage, whether the current all of a sudden spikes up or down, any faults on the ground system. It doesn't give me a location as to where or how long, it just gives me figures, and it dates time stamp, and so that's all I can go by.
There was no damage to our pump station, which is just directly south of that?
Nothing.
Can I just ask you a question? Mrs. Daly, thank you for coming, first of all. Mentioned that in her estimation, there are two lines that come towards her home. Can you explain me that story of the two legs?
Okay, in a house, there's only one, say, one service wire that goes to the house. Inside that service wire, there's three cables. There's your two hots, which carry 120 volts each, and your neutral. And there's only one cable per house, whether it's overhead or underground.
Okay, so no matter what, there is only one...
There's only one wire.
One wire that comes into the house, therefore, the power surge, which, or whatever happened, only comes as one line to the box, the electrical box in that house.
Correct.
And so that it affected half of the house or not is hard to explain?
It is hard to explain. Electricity is a very funny thing, you can't control it, you can't see it. What it does is, electricity is always wanting to find a way to ground, always. That's why everything is on insulators, glass, porcelain, it's always wanting to find its way to ground. And by some odd reason, whether it's, you know, a bird sitting up on a pole decides to spread its wings between the wire and the pole, the electricity just found its way to ground. And whether it's in a home or whatever, it's going to go where it wants to go.
Okay, so I understand there was a lot of wind that day.
That's correct.
Whenever there was, is it possible that wires touched each other?
It's possible. If it was, if the wires tapped, you know, slapped together, it would have been recorded for that.
Cause at that local point?
Yeah, but Mrs. Daly's residence, everything is underground.
Okay, so that wouldn't have happened?
That wouldn't have happened there, but who's to say somewhere else in town that that might have happened?
But there was nothing recorded?
There was nothing recorded for that day.
Right.
Normally, when there's a power surge, I'm thinking up on the East Hill, when it affected 17 or 18 homes, right?
That was a, that was a complete different incident.
Okay, so it wasn't similar to this situation?
No, not even close.
Well, if I may, I'm just going back to, you know, when you say our guess is as good as yours, is in those guesses, is it possible that the surge happened from within the home itself? Something, like, I mean, I have a friend whose home burned down because of some wires getting crossed within the home, causing a huge, I mean, similar situation, half the house malfunctioned, and the walls showed marks everywhere there was an electrical line where it started.
I have seen that. I have seen where a gentleman's stove finally just gave out, and it ruined a lot of electronics inside his house.
Inside the house. So you're saying that that's on the table as possible in this scenario, could have been, it might not have traveled through our line at all?
Very possibly, yes.
Leonard, I do a lot of maintenance in Lethbridge, and one of our places showed one half of the units out of power, the other half of the units were. So when we called the master electrician in, he found that the connections, the main wire connections on the box itself, one of them was loose. Simply tightened it up, whammy.
Solved all your issues, yes.
Yeah, now, is that a possibility in Mrs. Daly's home?
I guess what was found within the residence itself, and getting this from Justin Winder, the electrician's, was a lot of the light bulbs were on the one, just by sheer coincidence, on the one side of the panel, all the light bulbs on that side were burnt out, whether because of an issue or not. Yeah, we don't tighten up the plugs inside the meter base.
Oh, don't you?
No. All we do, we bring the wire to the bottom of the house, we leave it there, the electrician runs it up, the electrician tightens all the wires up, we don't touch that. Then all we do then is come and put the meter on, and that's where we stop.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Andy Olson was a co-builder of my house, and he came over last week, and I told him what had happened, and he said, you know, I can go to the panel box and I can point to you which ones went out, because he knows which ones were on this line and which ones were on that line. And so we did a little test, and he went and he pointed to them like that, and he hit every single one exactly as the ones that went out. So he knew that there was, one line was on these things on the panel box, and the rest were on this other line on the panel box. So I didn't have to tell him very many of the things, I just told him a couple of things, and he was able to go like that and say, they're the ones that went with it, and he was absolutely right. So there's two separate lines, and only one line got affected.
Okay, I think what we're, we'll clarify this, I'm referring to it as one cable, it's all jacketed inside one cable, but there's three wires inside that one cable. And I think that's where our miscommunication was happening, we were talking two lines, I'm thinking it's one cable, I'm thinking it's, okay, there's two separate services going to the house. No, it's one cable, but inside that cable is three wires, your neutral and your two hot legs, which gives you 120, 120, and then 240 to run your stove and your dryer.
What is the difference between Jared Edwards coming into my house on that evening, and you not coming into my house last week, when the mayor had told me that she was going to have you come and do an inspection of my house? But when it came down to it, you didn't come in because of some kind of liability, and so what's the difference between that other town representative coming in and you coming in or not coming in? What's the difference between the two?
Rosemary, if you don't mind me saying something?
Could you just speak louder? I am hard of hearing, I really do have a hard time hearing.
Thank you. If you don't mind me saying, when we discussed at the last meeting, who will come and look at the system, it was council recommendation that Leonard go see if the system was working, and councillor Creed said he will assist, and wanted to be able to see what was happening. So I didn't say so. Council decided that that was important for us.
So the council decided that Leonard was not going to come into the house?
No, the council decided that Leonard will go and review the system, as the electrician for the town is responsible for the distribution system, not for your internal electrical system.
Well, I misunderstood then, at last council.
No, so that's what was said, that's what, no, that was not what was said. If you go back in a minute of the meeting, you will see that was not what was said.
But it wasn't specified that he was just, well, you know what, you may be right, because I did not hear very much when on that meeting, because everyone talked so quietly, and I couldn't hear what was being said.
Yeah, I appreciate you trying to get clarification, but I think we need to hear as council what Mrs. Smith has to say to us.
Nick.
Nick, sorry, I'm giving you a new name today. And it's important for us, because eventually that will guide our decision. Okay, thank you.
We must also remember, Mayor, that our employees are strictly up to the town, you know, up to that residence, not inside the residence. They can't, they shouldn't go inside the residence, because that's not their mandate. Their mandate is to take care of the town power.
I wouldn't have assumed that, because I know that Jared had already been in the house with my daughter that night, so I didn't know that he couldn't come in.
I'd just like to clarify, when our employees respond to an incident, we try to help best we can, but in this instance, Leonard was specifically looking at the distribution system.
Any, yeah, councillor Creed?
Yeah, I just should make a comment here, because I tried to do some investigating to, you know, understand what happened, and I also just like to mention, I talked to Justin Winder, who was your electrician, who installed your generator and your surge protector later on. Jared informed me that he has quite a bit of experience in checking houses, like when you had that incident up on the East Hill, when several houses suffered high voltages, that he was in there magging, you know, checking, making sure that everything was okay. He did say that he, after the fact, he did check through Mrs. Daly's house to make sure everything was intact, that the wiring was good, and so I feel like, you know, at least we've, because my concern before is that I don't want to see something like that happen again, and also, Mrs. Daly did have Jared, or Jared, Justin, install a surge protector on her panel, which, you know, was a good idea, and I know when I talked to you, Leonard, you said that you have a surge protector in your home as well. Is it a good idea to have, for everybody to have a surge protector on their panels?
I think it's smart.
Okay, I mean, I have never had one, but I've never had a problem, but I hope they don't.
Was the surge protector on before this incident?
No.
Oh, okay. So it's in place now?
She has one now.
Was the generator hooked up before this incident?
The generator was, yes. There was no, there was nothing happened with the generator, there was no indication on the generator that there was ever a loss of power.
But was it fired up on the initial connection? Was it fired up in conjunction with the town power?
No, it was not. The generator registers, if it comes on, the generator did not come on, the generator did not register any power outage. The generator is designed to come on if there is a power outage, and there was no power outage registered.
Well, it had to be on both, it had to be total power outage for a generator to come on.
So, Leonard, and just to help me, and again, people that are trying to prevent this thing from happening in the future, if one were to install a surge protector at their box, right, and then the scenario that we addressed, where something short-circuits inside the house and causes this to happen, would that trigger the surge protector all the way that way, or would it still just fry everything on its way to the surge protector?
I can't answer that, I don't know. That's beyond my scope and knowledge.
Right.
Councillor Creed? Yeah, I can partially answer that, councillor PY, because as part of my research, I did an internet search on power surges, and it did indeed say that many surges can happen within the house, not even, maybe not large surges, but even like a motor starting up will cause power fluctuations. And when something turns off, your power has to compensate. When something turns on, your power has to compensate, and there can be fluctuations. And on the internet sites that I looked at, it recommends that you also have surge protectors on any electronic equipment in your house, because even a minor surge may not fry your equipment, but it can deteriorate the circuitry in, you know, in computers and other things, so, yeah, your surge protector on your meter, according to what I studied on the internet, does not totally protect electronic equipment in your house from fluctuations caused by inside the house.
Okay. Thank you, Leonard. Any other specific questions that we can address to Leonard? Do we have any recommendations that we would like to see made to council?
I think councillor Creed had one, you said this one.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the recommendation, from all my studies, is that there was no negligence on the part of our electrical utility, either from an omission point or a commission point, that there was no negligence. So, you know, my recommendation that the town cannot take responsibility in this case for the power, you know, I sympathize, but we can't take responsibility as a town, and that's fine. My recommendation to council is that we can't cover that as a town.
Councillor PY?
I also remember reading your report, though, that to recognize it as a tragic incident, you know, and to, you know, to, you know, recommend that people help when people are in trouble. We help each other out as a community, that's what communities do, maybe not government-driven, but maybe private-driven.
If we can do something, anything individually, or...
I would suggest that maybe that should be something that is not driven from our council, not part of our council discussions, actually.
That's fine, that's why I didn't send that as a part of my letter.
Any further discussions on the councillor Creed's recommendation?
Am I going to have a chance to present some things?
Would you like to address this for a moment? That'd be great.
Yes, I would.
Sure.
Thank you. I have been in touch with my insurance company, and an adjuster's coming tomorrow morning, and after he's come, there will probably be an electrician coming to check through the whole house to see what else might have been damaged, or to see... whole house to see what else might have been damaged, and/or to see if there's anything could be found that would be my blame. So I'm not sure what day that electrician will come, but the adjuster will be there at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. So I just prepared a few words. As a taxpayer and a good citizen of Cardston, I assume that there are certain things or reasons that I would want to build a home here. Services such as police protection, volunteer fire department, safe water supply, garbage collection, electricity and gas services, to name a few. I'd like to ask if I can trust the town to provide safe water supply? And if the water happens to get contaminated, is the town only responsible for the water up to the water meter? As you're claiming that your responsibility is only up as far as the electrical meter. There are many power outages in Cardston, and I can handle that with a $6,000 generator. How could I handle this power outage? And if the citizens of Cardston are at risk for a similar power surge on their property, don't you think it would be a good idea to forewarn them? If you had sent me a letter saying that I was at risk for a town power surge, I would have had a power surge protector installed in my home, as I now have had done since this incident. An alternative to this idea would be for the town to install power surge protectors on every line, you know, just before the meter box. So I'll talk to you about the adjustment coming. But I've talked to IMAX, and they have no record of the problem that night. And if they were going to have done any work on the line, they would have notified me officially with a letter. And they asked me to call the neighbors, see if there was any jolts on the neighbors' lines that same night. And so far, I've only heard back from six neighbors, but none of them have had any sign whatsoever. But there wasn't one of them that didn't mention how many times there's short power outages. And like I say, my expensive generator did me no good that night. Which I don't know if I'd have spent $6,000 if I'd have been told by my electrician that it's only going to be good for a total power outage. But I didn't know about power surges then. And so if you drive by my home, you probably think I have quite a bit, because my home is lovely, and it's only three and a half years old. And I put an expensive vinyl fence around it. But that's, the reason it is that way is because I spent all my money to get it that way. And so I'm really short right now. I've put $200 a month in my bank account, my government savings account, so that I can pay my taxes. And that money is completely gone because of this $1,500, and then the $400 or so that the power surge protector and the loss of my fridge went for a whole month. I lost a lot of food and a lot of headache the last four months. Well, I am thankful that my brain's working a little bit better as compared to how it was a few months ago. And it's going to be pretty hard to convince me that the town's not responsible for this. Like, who is? Am I? Are all the citizens in Cardston up to this same risk that I just went through? They are. They should be warned. They should be told, get yourself a power surge protector, because it could happen to you. And so that's all I can say.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. I want you to know that your voice has been heard. We've talked about this at great length.
Could you say that again?
Your voice has been heard. We have talked about this at great length. There's been a number of, even emails back and forth between councilors over the last week or so.
Oh, you weren't talking bad about me?
No, not talking bad about you, no.
Thank you.
But I think as Councilor Creed pointed out there, that we, the town does have limited liability on that. And in fact, when we talked about applying to our insurance company for it, which if the town was responsible, the insurance company would cover the costs on that, the insurance would be denied.
Regarding about that insurance? If I claimed this, it's a $1,000 deductible, and they'd only give me around $500. And I can guarantee you that that $500, they'd get it back by raised premiums. And the premiums don't just last until the $500 is reached, it goes on and on and on. And it doesn't go according to how big your claim is. It goes according to how many times you've made a claim.
Yes.
And I've only made one claim here, and that was for the big hailstorm.
The insurance I was referring to was the town's insurance?
Yes, I realize that.
So, and there's...
So why don't we make a deal? Meet me halfway, at least.
The, my personal concern with that would be in establishing a precedent of the town's liability for it.
I know, can we do this secretly?
No, absolutely can't.
I bet you'd give me my money right now if we could do it secretly.
No, we can't.
I know you can't, but that's the problem, isn't it?
Rosemary, I think one of the largest challenges we're having as a council is that because there's no evidence that anything related to the town is at fault, then we can't spend those town dollars, which are taxpayer dollars. They come from you, they come from your, they come from your neighbors, right? So we, as stewards of those funds, we have to be careful as to how we distribute that. Now, that being said, personally, right, personally, we can recommend that people help you, not as town councilors, however. As town councilors, we don't see sufficient, sufficient evidence. But Rosemary, to give you one example, and again, you know, we don't want to be talking all day about this, we just have limited time. But if the surge had come from within your home, as it did to my neighbor down in Arizona, and that surge came from your home, traveled through the town's lines and affected your neighbor, and it was pointed out that you were at fault, you know, that would be a problem. Now, in this case, it only just affected your home. So your neighbors weren't affected by this surge. We don't know where it started, whether outside, from outside or from within. So luckily, nobody's liable to your neighbor's home, neither you nor us. What we're trying to find out is who's liable for what happened in your home. It may have been you. And when I say you, I just mean one of your appliances doing something funny, right? It may have been, it may have been the town. There's just no evidence. There's no way for us to find out. So we have to chalk it up to an act of God, right up there with hail, and we just have to say the town is not responsible for this incident. So I think that's where it's resting now. And when we say the town, we mean as far as helping you with taxpayer dollars. That's not to say that we all don't empathize with your situation, feel horrible that it happened, and definitely want to let people know, hey, this could happen anywhere, in any home at any time. And it may not have anything to do with electricity coming to your house. It might be just one little appliance in your home, such as an electric skillet, causing this to happen. That's how my friend's house actually had this fire.
I was unconscious at the hospital at the time, so it wasn't coming anything.
Right.
Councilor P. Y., we've got, we do have a recommendation on the table that we need to vote on. So all in favor of Councilor Creed's recommendation?
Thank you.
So we're finished?
We are tonight, thank you.
I'm not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Our next delegation is from Mr. Kahoon, Harlan.
Okay. I was asked to come and make a presentation to town council. You can see on the top, "Starting my lifetime golf membership." I'll start out, first three paragraphs are just a little bit of history. I became acquainted with Stan Bishop when I was in high school. We became very good friends when I moved to Canmore on a truck stop on the Trans-Canada Highway. Stan was the golf course superintendent in Banff, at the Banff Springs Golf Course. He was responsible for getting that course rated as one of the top 20 in Canada. The reason I'm telling you this and telling you Stan's credentials is the reason that Stan got called to Cardston, and I'll cover that a little later on. He was also a consultant when the Cannonascus Golf Course was built. They'd fly their helicopter, Van picked him up and take him to the Cannonascus Course. Also, years ago, we had a group of Cardston guys, and we had probably 10 or 12 every year that went to various golf courses to play golf for a few days. Stan invited us to come to Banff. We stayed in his house right on the course when we played in Banff. Randy Jensen was one of the golfers that went with us. And the reason that fact is important is that sometime later, Randy phoned me and said Cardston needs an 18-hole fantastic golf course. Phone Stan and get him down here, which I did. Stan and Don Bishop, that's Stan's nephew, came to Cardston and made a fantastic golf course out of the nine-hole track that was here. Then we get into the meat of the thing. What did I do to warrant a lifetime membership in this course? First of all, I co-signed Don's loan for $400,000. That money went to buy the golf course from the then MD of Cardston, number six. I said, I can't remember the circumstances of how the town of Cardston ended up with the title, but I think I do remember. That's the next part. They ended up paying off some outstanding debts. I think Don and Stan deserve a pat on the back for everything they accomplished here. At a meeting in the town hall, former mayor said, in a tape-recorded meeting, and Randy taped-recorded that meeting, he said the creditors would be satisfied. I think they were to get a certain percentage of what they had invested, and I'm not sure what that percentage was. Anyway, if the creditors were satisfied and there was any money left, it would go to Don. There wasn't money left, about $200,000, but Don got none of it. And I understand, I didn't understand then, but I understand now, that Don turned it down, and he said, pay the creditors more. Anyway, with what Don had personally put into the golf course and pay off the loan I'd co-signed for, he came out losing about a million dollars. And I've got a question there. I guess I didn't state it as a question, but I wonder if anyone ever sent him a letter of thanks or offered him a lifetime membership? Randy Jensen and Vince Selk got three lifetime memberships for putting in, Randy told me 30, and it's on here at $35,000 each. Out of their lifetime memberships, they were able to sell two of them and use one for I gave part of my land to the golf course, which consisted of land on number 17, including most of the lake, if not all, I don't remember exactly, the green, and a tee box or two on number 18. At that time, I was given the old shooting range. I don't know if you know where that is. That's over the hill from the number three hole, your new number three, or par three hole, not number three, sorry.
Number 15.
Yeah, number 15. My advisor, he knows, of course, he built it. Anyway, I have, I have no use for the old shooting range, and if the title is actually in my name, I'd like it to go to Stan, who has suggested something. And if Stan doesn't do it, then the golf course should, should put a nursery there, plant trees, flowers, grow them, so that you can beautify the course and put in healthy trees when you need to change a tree. And you could even have a nice lawn, mowed, well-manicured lawn, so in case a tee box or patch on the green needs fixing up, you've got it right there to do it. Anyway, I think that the land that I gave there was probably worth more than what Randy and Vince had put in, from what I understood. Anyway, I put here that someone from the town was supposed to take that parcel out of my title and put it into the golf course. I got ahold of Greg Burt, who said that he did do that. I think he was the mayor at that time. And he also said that he puts the shooting range into my name too, but I've never seen anything on that. And I put here that they put up $35,000 to make repairs on the golf course. Like I say, Randy said 30. Stan thought it was a little bit more than that, but maybe when the town paid off some of the creditors, they got some of theirs back, and maybe that's why it got to where it was. And on the next page, I've got the reasons why my lifetime membership doesn't do me a lot of good. And first of all, my wife was going to be here, but she's involved at the genealogical library, the family history center, they're having an open house. She's worked there for 23 years and had volunteered to be at the open house, so she couldn't be here. Anyway, I broke my back. I required an intertransverse bilateral spinal fusion. That's, they cut two bones out of my hip, and they welded wings of a vertebrae, or two vertebrae on each side of my back, they welded them together. It took 200 stitches on three different layers to sew me back together. It was six months before I could even tie my own shoelaces. Needless to say, no golf or any other activity. And what happened? I would be Richard's twin right now, because I gained a lot of weight. And that later led to diabetes and eventually heart attack. I had angioplasty, and as I was being wheeled to the recovery room, the nurse asked me what the pain level was, you know, rated between zero and 10, and I said about a three, and she jammed on the brakes and hustled me back in. Doctor said that if I'd have been in the recovery room, I'd have been dead, which could have solved a lot of your problems. Anyway, I did another angioplasty right then, and we put in a stint this time. Anyway, a while later, I had another heart attack, and I was blessed with a triple bypass. So I have a nice, they had to cut through my sternum. Anyway, I have a nice scar down there. Anyway, I just haven't been able to golf, so that golf membership, I've tried a few times, and that golf membership just doesn't do me any good. And Jane doesn't golf. She likes to ride around, like if I go, she likes to ride around just to see the beautiful course, but she doesn't golf. Anyway, as you can see, our lifetime memberships don't do us a lot of good. We'd like to sell both our lifetime memberships, as others have done, and I think the town and golf association should give a lifetime membership to Stan and our Dean Bishop. After all, he's the one that built the course. I also think Don Bishop should have a lifetime membership. I don't even know if Don golfs, but I think just as a token, he should. And then the last paragraph, I just put what I did on the county council. And I work with Mary Him, and I can tell you, she'll do assigned tasks and do it very, very well. And she did. I appreciate it, working with her. Anyway, I hope you will consider and grant our request to be allowed to sell our lifetime memberships. Thank you.
So, questions? Councilor Ben-Gree first?
What is the policy on selling lifetime memberships, Mary?
If I might, we don't have a written policy on lifetime memberships. My understanding is the Smith family and Harlan and Jane's lifetime memberships were issued to them by the golf association. And also Randy and Vince Selk were issued a lifetime membership from the golf association as well. They further came to council after the town of Cardston took over the course, and Randy and Vince were both, at that time, and there's a copy of the motion, I believe, in your background, were given permission, they were awarded two lifetime memberships that they were able to sell.
So at the time, at the time they were issued, those two memberships were identified as they were able to sell those two memberships?
Yes, correct, as part of that motion.
Then further to my question, can Mr. Kahoon's memberships be transferred? Then further to my question, can Mr. Cahoon's memberships be transferred to somebody else?
Maybe I have a further question going along with that question that you have. My question, maybe my comment or question would be, what you understand to be a lifetime membership. To me, when I hear the word "lifetime," I hear something that is for the life of piece of machinery, or life of the person who holds that title. And I do not see the transferable clause with it unless it's specified. And if it is not specified in writing somewhere, it is just a lifetime, which means it is for the life of the member that holds it.
See, these memberships were given out when we had a council representative on the golf committee. That'd be back in 2005 or even farther back.
No, not Harland and Jane's or the Smiths, I believe. Those were issued by the golf association. The only lifetime memberships that were issued by town council, when the council had a committee, a golf committee at that time, were the two that were issued to Vince Selk and two that were issued to Randy Jensen, that were transferable. And that's the motion that I'm talking about. When I say the golf association, that is prior to the time the town of Cardston took ownership of the course.
In other words, the town did not have a link with that golf course association?
We, the town of Cardston did agree to honor those memberships, those lifetime memberships, when we took over the course, that were existing at that time. But Harland may have a copy of the agreement, but I don't have anything on it. There's no record.
When I talked to Randy about this, Randy was probably like most of you, he didn't know why I even got one, or two. Like, my wife and I each got one. And when I told him, it was, wow. I mean, think of, think of the pressure being under of co-signing on a $400,000 loan. I knew what Stan was like, and so that made me think, well, if Stan's like that, Don hopefully is like that. But it went right down to the wire. It was within two days of when my note would have been called. And I don't remember whether it was two days before or two days after the deadline, but it was right, I mean, it was...
Mayor?
Can I ask you a question? You compare your situation to Randy's and Vince's. I was not there at that time, so I'm trying to understand the situation, so if you don't mind me asking. I understand that Randy at least lost money, there was money lost. My question to you is, did you lose money from having co-signed that loan?
Not on that, but I did give the golf association, I gave them a parcel of land, and that probably was worth more than what Vince or Randy...
But that was to the golf association and not to the town?
That was to build the golf course.
It was to the golf association in those days. It was not directly to the town.
Yes.
Correct. So you gave land willingly to the golf association, not to the town, and you obtained a life membership from the golf association for that deed that you gave them?
I didn't ask for the lifetime membership. I got that sometime later. The town did end up with the ownership of the golf course. The MD had it before.
Indirectly. Indirectly, later on.
Yeah, so you guys got the golf course.
I think what we've got to consider too is, with that parcel of land that Mr. Cahoon did donate to the golf course, whether it was to the golf association back twenty years ago or whatever, we are enjoying having that parcel of land in our golf course. That's what makes our golf course that part of his land. And so with respect to that, we need to consider that in our discussions too.
Counselor?
I look at this thing and I really don't see any difference between what Harland's done and what Randy and Vince. I think the bottom line is that we do have a beautiful course because of what Mr. Cahoon did and what Mr. Bishop have done. And I think we're splitting hairs to see who did what at what time or anything like that. If Mr. Jensen and Mr. Selk got memberships given to them as a result of giving a loan that was probably quite a bit less than what was donated, and they got to sell their memberships, I don't see a problem personally. And also, the fact that those memberships were conditional that they've become, they expire in 2030, I don't see a problem with doing the same thing in this situation at all.
I think there is, I think there is one difference, and that is the, Randy, as an example, is it Randy?
Yes.
Has, well, Randy and Vince have non-transferable lifetime memberships that they were not allowed to sell.
Yeah, I see that.
Because they were issued by the golf association.
No.
Shut up. If that's not the case...
Go ahead and ask Mr....
Ask him a question.
Please give us the information, if you have it.
The memberships that Randy and Vince Selk were given, were given to them sometime after the town took over.
Yes.
The town was in operation of those at that time. And they were issued three memberships each. And then at some point, they were allowed to sell those memberships. But I've never seen a letter that stated whether it was one, because I was long gone from the golf operation at that time, whether it was they had to keep one or whether they could sell all three. But in those days, it would have been stupid for them to sell all three, because they're both golfers, they needed one membership for themselves. Now, whether there was a stipulation, I don't know, Mary, and I can't tell you whether there was a stipulation in there. As to Harland Cahoon's involvement in lifetime memberships, we had gone into a meeting with the county, the MD of Cardston, thinking we were getting a lease on the golf course, Don and I. That day, they said, "No, we're not going to give you a lease, you've got to buy it." They put a dollar figure on that, and we had thirty days to come up with the money. Harland Cahoon signed his pledge for that money. I talked with the council of the golf course at that time, and I said, "I think something should be done for Mr. Cahoon, because he's putting his own property around the golf course up as collateral for us to move ahead with the construction of that golf course." At that time, Don and I were buying the golf, we hadn't the lease negotiated with the golf association. We were, at the same time, buying the dairy land from Mr. Cahoon. So, the property line on seventeen was immaterial, because we were going to have the golf course on this hand, and we were going to own the property on the other side of the property line. It ended up that a portion of that was on the dairy property. Now, when we forfeited on the golf course, we forfeited on Mr. Cahoon's property. Now there's a problem with that strip of land that is there. Harland went to the town, the town and he negotiated, as he has said, that strip of land. I took Mr. Cahoon out last night, and I will take any one of you out that wants to go and showed him the legal pin placements and where they were changed. What happened to that land transfer? I don't know. I've heard that Mr. Atkins figures there's, he owns part of the seventeenth fairway, because maybe the land wasn't transferred from Harland to the golf course then. I don't know.
Greg Burke said it was. I talked to Greg, because he was kind of the head man at that time, and he said, "Yeah, it was done."
In all honesty, I, being a golfer, I find a lot of that very interesting, the history of our golf course, but I don't think it really has great bearing on our decision of what we need to talk about here.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah. If we, if we're, kind of coming back to the question, because you were kind of headed in that direction. I just wanted to clarify with Harland, was it, I didn't quite catch, did you want, was your intention to transfer your membership to Mr. Bishop, or to sell your membership and have another membership given to Mr. Bishop?
I don't need a lifetime membership. I don't golf anymore.
Yeah, was, I know, was your, was your request wanting to transfer your lifetime membership to Mr. Bishop, was that your intent?
I've got two. I can tell you what I can live with. If I could sell one and transfer the other one, I'd transfer it to Stan and our...
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to find. So I would certainly have no problem, you know, if you wanted, you know, like, transfer one to Mr. Bishop, if he wanted it. For, you know, if you were just selling it on, you know, to anybody, then I would, this is my personal opinion, I'm not making a statement, but my personal opinion would be to have a similar stipulation as to when the other guys sold, sell their memberships, it's yours, no longer a lifetime, it's to a, you know, to a certain date. That's, just giving my opinion on that, but...
I'm trying to understand something regarding those, those lifetime memberships. Those lifetime, as far as I'm understanding what is being said around the table, were non-transferable lifetime memberships. Am I correct?
Some were and some weren't.
So, the ones that were, were the ones that were issued by the town?
That's correct.
The two memberships?
So, those were the ones then that council had the right and the privilege to renegotiate, correct?
They issued them.
They issued them. Therefore, council of the day had the ability to decide what to do with them. The question here is, do we consider the lifetime memberships that were issued before the town took over, so by the golf course association, should we consider those lifetime as being equal to the lifetime membership issued by the town? If we can resolve that issue, then the answer as to how we deal with it should be similar.
I think that's the fundamental question. My understanding is, is how many, how many lifetime memberships we talking about? Doral and their men and their children?
About a dozen.
Do they all come due 2030?
I'm looking at that contract.
Do they all expire 2030?
No, that's the four that were sold. Everything else was lifetime memberships that were non-transferable.
If I may, just two questions, just following up, I think, on the question that was asked. Verlin, if we may, you're planning, if it's granted that you can sell a lifetime membership, do you have in mind someone you want to sell them to, or would it just kind of be open market in your mind?
I was approached by somebody on the golf association that wouldn't want to necessarily tell you who it is.
No, no, no.
But they said, "I got a guy here that wants to buy your membership."
Gotcha. So essentially, you have a buyer, you have a buyer in mind specifically?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think that when the original, and I wasn't there, certainly, but when the original lifetime memberships were made available, it was to recognize those who had significantly contributed. As you said, I don't think there's anyone here that doubts that you certainly earned the ones you and your wife were given. Maybe there should have been a few more perhaps awarded at that time. But, so now the next question is, that recognition that comes with a lifetime membership for your significant contribution, can that be transferred to somebody who maybe didn't make that same level of contribution? And I think, I think what we see there, in the ones that were sold, where it was just kind of capped and given a year limit, it kind of lessens that distinction, right? So technically, those are not lifetime memberships, they are just memberships till 2030. And I would say, this is just me now talking, if we were to offer some kind of similar something, it would be along those lines, to say, yes, hey, maybe you can transfer this, but there would be a cap, it wouldn't have that same distinction, that same honor, it would maybe expire at the same time as these, one time to 2030 kind of thing. Because, you know, with your name not on it, it doesn't have that same, you know, honorary, yeah, exactly.
Pardon?
Mrs. Crowman said that the town made the decision before, and they didn't get to make the decision on these. My answer to that would be, now you would get to make a decision on these, and you do get to make a decision on these.
Absolutely.
And in the long run...
I mean, you own the golf course. You didn't own it before, but you own it now.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm trying to understand is why those lifetime memberships were given, and it appeared that there was some definite reason why, being contribution of some sorts to the well-being of that golf course and bring it to peace, yours being land, or maybe support with your signature for that loan. Other may be because I lost a pile of money and was somewhat compensated by the town when the town offered lifetime membership, which is, I understand, the case of Randy and Vince. And so there is a historic reason why those were given, and I believe we have to be fair and just in trying to keep with understanding why they were given and with a sense that the lifetime membership means for the life of the owner. So I understand your desire for being able to transfer one. I understand that. I understand your physical condition, why you would rather divest yourself. But those are conditions that I do not know that need to come into our conversation. I think we need to understand, is it fair and just to allow someone now to be given that or sold, and then given that membership under the same conditions that the original owner had? And I believe not. I believe condition restriction would need to be applied if we choose to let you sell them. Because they are not exactly in the same ballpark.
And I think there then needs to be a recognition that if we do that, we are then...
We need to have it.
Sending precedent that all of those other ones could then be converted on that same basis.
And that's, you're right. Then it is up to council to decide on a proper policy to deal with those memberships, lifetime memberships, once and for all.
Well, I would suggest that whatever we end up deciding on Harland's here, by default, then becomes the policy.
Yeah, I agree. I've got one more question. If you decide a way I don't think you should decide, does that mean I should get to decide and take my land back? So I have number seventeen green now and number eighteen tee box?
That's a great concern, Harland. We just want to take a strip of land from anybody, you sell them to them. So they have to give us some land.
Harland, the concern is...
It wouldn't happen, but...
The concern is, is this lifetime connotation. And as the mayor points out, life is life of the owner. And so we put a stipulation on one sale of the lifetime being expired at 2030, that's the end of the life.
Sixteen years.
Yeah, in sixteen years. And that was on two of them.
You'll sell mine and let Jane sell her lifetime membership, I'll just destroy mine or give it back to you. Her mother lived to be ninety-eight. I can't remember her father, right up to five.
And you're only forty-five, right?
She's got a lot of years left.
Mayor?
There's just two things I need to clarify. In the, in the sale of those, we have agreements here, and I just... In the sale of those, we have agreements here, and I just pulled up the agreement to make sure we all are on the same page. Two of those were, they were sold to an individual who has a lifetime membership now. They can transfer those one time, but they expire at 2030. Okay, so the two that were sold are a lifetime membership, but they can only be transferred once beyond that and have a 2030 expire after that. So the second thing I want to clarify, though, is one of the things that's missing here, I have evidence and I have supporting documentation for a lot of these lifetime memberships, but I don't have for Harlan and Jane's and I don't have for Smith's. And that's one of the things that's, I think, causing a lot of the debate here. So I did ask Harlan, when I talked to him last week, if he had a copy of anything from the, you know, providing evidence of his lifetime membership, but I didn't receive anything. So I don't know if there's something out there that maybe could help council make that decision as well.
Well, maybe the question to you, Harlan, is, do you have a copy of that membership? Surely something must have been...
Yes, I have, and I read it for the first time about a week ago or two weeks ago after I talked to Randy. I didn't even know for sure I had one, but I found it.
Could you maybe bring it and give it to the town?
Might I suggest that maybe any decision on this should be put off until after we see a copy of that?
I can tell you what clause number six says, and I had never read it before, but it says, this can't be transferred.
It cannot be transferred?
Yeah, but I don't think whoever, whoever gave it to me, and I don't know who that was, they didn't realize, I mean, I've got more in this than Randy or Vince, believe me.
I don't think there's any debate here about that, Harlan. I was a new golfer in the cart scenario when this was going on and I appreciate the sacrifices that were made by yourself and a number of others here in getting us the golf course that we have today. And you're right, we have a beautiful property. To me, that actually isn't the issue. The issue is, whatever we decide, if we decide to make a decision tonight, is going to be a precedent and becomes a policy for all the other ones as well.
There are not very many other ones. Randy and Vince have got three. The Smiths have got seven, I think, and as far as I know, that's it. And the Smiths are non-transferable, I think.
Okay. I really think that it would be important for council to know what kind of clause are attached to all the lifetime membership. And if they're all written with clause six as non-transferable. I think we need to understand that aspect first, because then we're dealing with all the same kind. And then whatever we decide will apply properly to all of them.
Do we have copies of the other?
I have, the only evidence I have is for copies of anything that was transferred. You have the list of lifetime memberships in front of you and I can tell you.
What we need to find out?
I have Lloyd Clark, Steve Holland, Ken Selk, Mike Schaefer. So those are the only four that I have, anything.
Those were the four that were sold by Vince and Randy.
Those are the only ones that were transferred.
Yeah.
And I do have a copy of a letter that was dated in 2001 that says the town... There was a town motion that the town has agreed to honor the lifetime memberships of previous owners. We have also set the lifetime membership fee at half for a couple for the spouse. And in that letter, there is a list of lifetime members. And Harlan and Jane's names are both included in that one.
It doesn't say...
That's good enough.
It doesn't say if those are transferable or not.
No, it just says, we will honor the lifetime memberships. That's when we took over the course.
But it doesn't tell us if they were transferable or not.
So Harlan's telling us that, from his reading, it's non-transferable.
But we as a council can make a change to that if we so desire.
Yes, there's no question about that.
Just to clarify something, Marion, on the Smith ones, they were issued by the county of Cartston.
Right.
A long time.
Yes.
The golf course was sand greens, I believe, when they were issued.
But again, sorry, I don't mean to interact here, but we have no record of any. We only have record of what the town...
So what it comes down to, so, yes.
So maybe what should be recommended to council is to table the decision until we have proper record of all the lifetime membership and understand what clause is attached to them. So that when we make the decision, it applies to all the lifetime membership.
One last thing. Randy and Vince, I think, got the same exact contract I did. But then, because they spent a sum of money, they got two each.
Additional.
Extra. And evidently, they sold those. I didn't get anything extra when I sold or when I gave my land to the golf association or whoever I gave it to. And that's all I'm saying. I mean...
We will be fair, but we need to understand the legality of it all. And then we will make a proper recommendation and the policy we have will stand for the future. And I really want that to be a case clause after that, so we don't have to deal with that when you have it together.
You already give a precedent because you've given two.
But this is what I mean. We need to understand those that were transferable or not. The precedent was created on policies that were transferable. You have a different kind. Yours is non-transferable from the onset.
They had non-transferable as well, but they were given two more each by the town.
So they were transferable.
That's correct. So their non-transferable ones, though, did not transfer. They still have that.
No, they've got those. They want to go.
Right. And so that's what I mean. So we're not exactly comparing the same thing. But eventually, we need to come at one policy.
So we have a recommendation on the table to table this until we have more details on the policies. Any further discussion on that?
I want to know, how long are we going to defer this?
Not long.
No, I think this should be looked at.
Can we have a date?
Well, I would say by...
Can you tell me when we're going to have copies of it?
I think we need to have about two weeks, max.
Well, which is only next to council.
Actually, that's in between.
One after that.
And along with that, I think we're very careful with the other lifetime memberships. Very careful.
So...
So any further discussion on the recommendation? All in favor? So if you can get us a copy of your actual membership, just get it to Marion. And Marion, if you can try and track down some of the others.
Do you want her to take a copy and then I get it back?
Oh, yes, yes.
But I want to thank you for your presentation and I want to thank you for all you did to allow us to have that golf course. It's not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you for putting up with me.
It's all right. You were an easy counter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arlen.
Appreciate it. Yes, we fully expect that.
I've got about another five, six minutes.
We will have supper about six thirty-ish.
Okay. Counsel P, what's your timeframe?
I might be able to make it till supper.
Okay.
It's a lot of master or really vast.
Can we, before we step onto our next one, I think maybe we need to take a five-minute adjournment?
Yeah.
So can you get a motion for that? Motion, sorry. Yes, a motion to recess.
You can adjourn if you'd like.
Well, I would like to, but we probably shouldn't, so.
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess, all in favor?
Ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten minutes?
Yeah, ten minutes.
We know that, we know that it says on it it's non-transferable.
Well, we'll have to see what we do with it once we get it all, then we'll have a decision.
Let's get all of our...
Blow the whistle, Larry.
Three-second rule, Randy.
Go major general, there you go.
I know, it's been on this far.
Well, that's public, man. Can we get a motion to reconsider? All in favor? Okay. So next item on the agenda is food security and backyard hands. So perhaps to start this one off, we could have Counselor Creed seeing as he was the one that brought this to us.
Okay. I'll be happy to start it off. Reading through some of the background material, I was a little concerned there. I really don't want to degenerate back into a discussion on the pros and cons of hens. I think food security is much more important than that. You know, and I'm going to kind of preface and go back to something we talked about on emergency management because, you know, when Mark Murphy talked to us about emergency management, he says, you don't wait till the emergency to come up with your plan. Now, I don't think anybody around this council table has ever been gone hungry in their lives. I hope we never do.
Well, I have.
Okay, hope we get over it. But one thing that I'd like to bring up sometime, this maybe doesn't relate to this discussion directly, but as I look at possible disasters, may not be natural disasters, we have seen in the past economic downturns, and, you know, the things that I'm reading on the internet, people, economists and others are saying, it's not a matter of if we have a crash, it's just when and how bad it will be. And when we've seen things like that, you know, in the crash of the nineteen twenty-nine and thirty's, we saw people heading into the cities. We saw them, you know, red lines and things like that. It's an interesting phenomenon that people always head into the cities and that's not where you always find food. And I'm thinking that this movement towards urban agriculture has some real viable or has some important aspects. Some of the cities, you know, if you've got a lot of people running into, a lot of people running out of food, may not have the capacity, you know, what they have in their cities to feed people. I'm thinking Cartston has the potential, if we was to encourage food security, to be able to handle situation if many people became out of work, that we could have food security. And, you know, relating to two backyard hens, a number of the articles, you know, that were kind of negative towards hens actually referred to the fact that there's a bunch of novices out there saying, okay, let's try it and it's, oh, it's not what I thought it was and, you know, kind of give them away. I don't think we have that problem here. We have people within the town and without the town that do have expertise. I can't see that this is going to be, you know, the backyard hens would be something that everybody's want to jump on the bandwagon for. But I think it would be, the least we could do is do something like Red Deer and set up a pilot project where some people could do it. Because, you know, we can have the argument of pros and cons until our eyes change color, but, you know, unless you actually experience it, we'll never know. It'll just be debate and theory. So I've seen, you know, other communities that are doing it successfully, many of the towns in Utah, they always have had backyard hens. I'm not seeing any news out of those towns saying that they're having any problems in those towns. I'm seeing the problems sometimes in towns that have just recently allowed it. All of a sudden, like, say, a bunch of novices jump on board and cause a problem. So my thoughts on it would be to let promote food security in general and let's start looking into backyard hens. We've done it in the past. It's not that we haven't, it hasn't happened in town before.
When we talk about food security and chickens, you probably have to have, what, ten to twelve chickens to have a little bit of food security? Because what do they make? Two eggs a day?
No, one. I'm guessing, my recommendation would be, say, four to six. Four to six chickens would be adequate for most any family. And you could keep that many in something the size of a garden shed or smaller. You need about four square feet per hen. Some places that read says you need about two square feet per hen.
Some say also ten.
That's for run, that's for run. Coop space, you need about two to four. Yes, and you need, yeah, you need a little exercise yard for them.
And then what do you do with them when they become on layers?
When they vote for chicken.
Then you can send them out of town to your friends or you can put them in a stew.
So you've become very attached to them and so you're going to slaughter them?
You can do that if you're farming. I mean, you know, they're an agricultural product. It's like, you know, there's people in the cities that kind of get these ideas that, you know, we can't kill our pets. That's a city idea, but they go to McDonald's all the time and they have chicken McNabbics and they don't seem to have a problem with that.
Okay. When we're talking about those details, they, essentially, depending on what we decide, we need to really start to think about the positive and the negative. There's some positive, obviously, as Counselor Creed just talked about. There is also some negative if they're not housed properly. And the negative is very simple. Right now, behind my yard, there's a family of four foxes. I have pictures and I brought them to my dream, so I make a great photo app. And then I had laying in my yard, a chicken full feathered, half eaten, that they're obviously brought to my yard to consume. So those foxes found them somewhere and brought them to near their den while they're doing that. So although I have been raised with chicken policies in our town and I never had an issue regarding that, what I have an issue is the proper housing and not attracting wildlife that would add to the workload of office officers. So that has to be, if ever that is something council want to do, is to have a policy, is to have chicken, is to have a proper policy regarding housing and regarding cleanliness and regarding... Because as you can read in a report that was given by our local vet, I asked him the question, how do you keep wildlife at bay? And his was, answer was, limit the food, the home's crap. But in general, people want chicken because they eat their food crap. So here, I'm trying to think, okay, I'm becoming a little bit more torn here. How do we handle that so that it does not create another issue? I have another picture in my yard with a family of six of those... I have another picture in my yard with a family of six of those skunks. And six skunks in your, in your backyard is no fun, so now I have the skunks and I have the...
Yeah, skunks and foxes.
And now I have the dead chicken.
You've got a zoo going on. Wildlife sanctuary.
So it's, it's a little bit of an issue that we cannot ignore if there is a bylaw that has to be put in place. It has to be done properly, and I agree with you. I would want to see, depending on what council will do, a pilot project because it needs to be, we need to be responsible. We can't, at the end of the life of an animal, say, "We dump it somewhere," or "We let it run in a street somewhere." Vancouver is having a problem where they have now to build a coop that's become overrun by chickens that are...
More than their cats.
That, yes, is becoming an issue greater than the feral cats. So we can't ignore all those aspects. It has to be properly regulated. But every time you talk regulation, you talk also enforcement.
And that, that's the...
And that becomes the, the flip side that you can't ignore either. So we have to be responsible. We, we understand the, the concept of food security, but we also have to understand the concept of what does it entail not to create more tax dollars going to enforcement in order for a few to enjoy that food production.
That's right, that's...
Well, further to the Vancouver problem, when they wanted this building to put all these chickens in, while the council denied that, so then they looked into, "Why don't we just kill them?" And now a little rights group said, "No, you can't do that."
That's right.
They have to be euthanized at forty dollars a chicken. So in Hawaii, I don't know whether they were like this when you were there, but there are bantam chickens everywhere.
Everywhere.
They're a traffic hazard.
Yeah.
You'd be driving down the street, and all of a sudden a chicken flies out in front of you.
I, I hit and run a few while I was there.
So that's somewhere where this is really run amok.
Counselor Gregory?
I got quite a few things to say. As I sit around this table, Counselor Creed and myself are probably the longest residents in town. I've been here sixty-four years, along with Counselor Creed. When I first bought my place four years ago, I had horses and I had a cow in the backyard. And the stench, the flies, my kids can go out there and enjoy it. But now I have a very friendly neighborhood, and I'm very, very selfish about my, and stingy about my backyard. And my neighbors all around are the same way. We get along very good. Counselor Creed, on the other hand, lives in an area where there's nobody immediately around you, and you recognize that, Bill. So chickens in your yard wouldn't present a problem because you don't have any immediate neighbors. But myself, our administration, Jeff, we, we all live in, in, in the interior of the community. So how do we make a bylaw that concerns all of the residences in town and, and make everybody happy that John Doe is gonna have chickens, and I'm not gonna have chickens, but I want to have the availability of being able to build a snowman and stuff when my grandkids come to meet me in my backyard? And I don't want flies, and I don't want any more skunk poles, because when I sit out in my man cave at night in the summertime, when it's really nice, at two o'clock in the morning, we have skunks that roam right through the center of our town. And Jeff will admit to this, that every once in a while, probably about once a week or once a month, you get a strong skunk smell that they're somewhere right in our neighborhood. And with chickens, attract skunks. And now you've got a, you've got a wildlife sanctuary happening up at your place, and maybe it's the neighbor around the corner that's keeping chickens.
Counselor Evans?
The other thing is enforcement. Like, in our bylaw, it says you can have two pets of any kind. There's people all around town that have more than two pets.
That's right.
How do, we don't enforce it?
Well, because the practical aspects with one bylaw officer, I don't think there's any way that we could, right?
So who's gonna go around and say, "Well, you've got two more chickens," or you should...
Creates a problem.
And who's gonna inspect the, the conditions?
Yeah.
I have the feeling that if, let's say, on a positive side, if we were to go ahead with such a thing, there has to be a proper land bylaw in place to allow exactly for the difference between where you live.
Zoning, that would be.
The zoning, the zoning. And I think that would be a fair thing because it has to be amiable to all. And definitely, if you live in an area that's more country-like, I can see poultry living there. But it is more urban-like, it might create another problem.
That's right, Counselor Evans?
If, if you were to do some land zoning, I understand Counselor Gregory's area, they're in smaller lots. Most of those lots in Richard's area are smaller lots. It would be really difficult to have them in a small confined area. Where I live, they're almost, some of them are, they're half an acre lots, or they're larger lots. So, you know, I don't have an issue with it myself in my area, but I understand it totally. We're Richard's concern, in, in the newer areas of town, the lots are smaller.
I've got a hundred foot deep, though.
Well, a hundred foot deep. I got two hundred and eighty feet deep. And under the current bylaw, if you were to have them, it states that you have to, your chicken coop cannot be any closer than a hundred and twenty-five feet to a person's home, right? And so there's not, most of the lots, you don't, you won't be able to do that.
That's horses or cows, yes.
Pardon me?
That's horses or cows.
Well, nevertheless, it still would have to be the same, I think, the same scenario. And so you'd have to, you'd have to make sure you have distances and have a lot that would take that. And I think if you're gonna do it, it has to be on a pilot project with restrictions.
Counselor Creed?
Okay, I think we're getting some, some parameters here. One of the things I, I gave to Marion was, was some information from West Banff, where my daughter lives. And they basically have done it on a point system, and actually, they allow large animals if you've got big enough, big enough property. But I mean, we could, we could figure out what we, what, you know, how we wanted to do it, but, you know, they, you know, you could do something like a, a point system to say, you know, if your lot is so big, as well as having restriction, distance restrictions. And as far as like enforcement goes, something like this in, in a community our size, very small community, I mean, we're, we're, we're not gonna have a, we're not Denver, we're not Vancouver. We're not gonna have hundreds of chickens around. I mean, that's kind of a dream, but I, I think there's a possibility of having an association here of, like a garden club, of people that would be self-regulating, that could basically self-regulate.
I would have a little faith in doing something like that.
Well, I think, I think, I think that could happen, because there are people around.
But if you have the choice to belong to the association, have the choice not to be in the association.
Well, no, I'm just saying that there, there could be...
One way or the other, though, you're, you're gonna have to have some kind of enforcement.
You'll have to, you'll have to have regulations, of course, and I, I have no problem with that, but I think, I think something like that. If, if you've got people that are interested in it, they will, they will really help regulate because, you know, say, for instance, if, you know, if I'm really keen on this, I, I don't want it to go down the drain. So if somebody's going to be irresponsible, I'm, I'm going to have an interest in saying, you know, "You, you need to do it this way and follow the laws."
Counselor Evans?
The other thing, it's sort of, to me, it's sort of like going salmon fishing. I, I go to salmon fishing, and I spend two, three thousand dollars, and I get forty pounds of fish. Well, have I really saved any money? No, I haven't. And it's the same thing with chickens. Chickens don't like cold weather. So you're gonna have to provide a heated area for these chickens. Otherwise, they're gonna start to molt, and then when they molt, it's six weeks to, or longer before they start producing again. So I've lost that six eggs a day, or whatever I was getting. It's back to the old salmon.
Counselor Gregory?
I'm just sitting here running crazy. We've got thirteen hundred residents in town, thirteen hundred and eighty residents, Marion?
Homes.
Homes.
Residents.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred and eighty?
Somewhere in that.
People.
Uh, taxpayers.
Thirty-five hundred and eighty residents.
Okay.
Citizens.
All right, citizens, okay.
Taxpayer.
What if we did this? If we ask for a legal petition of, consisting of a minimum of three hundred and twenty-five names of...
It'd have to be three hundred and sixty.
Three hundred...
Three hundred and fifty-eight names.
Three hundred and, well, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty names of taxpayers in the town of Cardston before we have a discussion on this and make a decision on this, be, this council be presented. Or any council.
If I may speak to that, I don't think that would be a problem. Like, I think you'd have that petition here within a week. And I mean, if you want, we can prove that by simply asking for it, but I don't think that that's gonna solve the problem, right?
All, all that does is, is it's a, well, it makes us have to bring it to the table, yeah.
Right, and, like, I, I'm telling you, just from experience, I can guarantee you, we can get that many signatures on a chicken petition. But I think, and if I may, Counselor Creed, I think what you maybe are open to, if, I don't know, is maybe a trial run for a year. We leave the bylaw the way it is. We say, "Anybody that wants to have some chickens, come be part of a focus group," right? It's a temporary thing. We're not changing the bylaw permanently. We're gonna allow you to have chickens under the following restrictions. Boom, 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 here's the requirements. You need permission from your neighbors, everything, blah, blah, blah. If they meet all those criteria, we give them a twelve-month chicken, basically a variance on our current bylaw. And then at the end of twelve months, we reassess. We say, "You know what? We had zero complaints. We had zero problems with that." We decide if we wanna extend those people, issue more, change a bylaw, but maybe, maybe we do something a little more temporary. Maybe we say, "Let's do a one-year trial run."
But is a one-year enough?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of what I was saying, is, is that unless you actually have the experience of having it, you know, like I say, we, we can just argue all day, and, and nobody, nobody really knows until, you know, until you try it.
Right.
And so, yeah, I, I'm...
From a, another perspective, this, this was an issue that I think all of us would agree was discussed quite a bit at the Door Dream campaign. And some pretty desperate, polarizing positions.
A lot of people that really want chickens, a lot of people that really don't.
Well, just exactly like you said, I don't think you'd have any problems finding three hundred and sixty people to sign a petition to have chickens. I don't think you'd have a problem finding three hundred and sixty people to sign a petition saying not to have chickens. Maybe the answer to this is for us to put together a plebiscite. And maybe we can include some of the, one of the other issues that's before us right now, put fluoride on there as well.
But with a plebiscite, you only attract the people that are concerned about that particular item.
That, that's the, that's the reality?
Does not work. You get twenty-five people in a plebiscite?
No, but...
Go ahead.
A plebiscite is definitely a way to allow people to express what they want. Then it becomes the role of council to make sure that people come and vote. And in this town, in general, people really do vote. And especially if there are polarizing questions, they come and vote, the same way as they come and sign your petitions in the past. So I don't view it as a bad exercise in democracy. Costs a little better money, but it is also a way to understand the will of the people in this town. I, I don't view it as a bad exercise. Personally, when I campaigned for mayor, I, part of my platform was that I would favor a plebiscite on every ride, on the chickens in town, because I think people should have the right to express themselves. And then it's a democratic process. If people want it, let them tell us.
Counselor Evans?
I, I have to agree with, with Mary, because during my campaign, talking to people, I had kind of the similar experience that you did. I had people that are definitely against, definitely for, and, and I, in my mind, have always thought, "You need to put it to a vote of the people" because it's a, it is kind of a polarizing issue.
It is one of the polarizing issues.
And a plebiscite gives that opportunity, an equal opportunity for people to say to the council, "This is the direction we want you to go on this contentious issue," or whatever. And I think that that's, I would maintain, that's what I think a plebiscite is good, and I like it personally.
Counselor Gregory?
My concern is if we had plebiscite, plebiscite on a swimming pool. Plebiscite come out positive, we want the indoor swimming pool, and yet we build an outdoor swimming pool.
It, it, it might, it might not come out positive for an indoor swimming pool if the information was that this was gonna cost you five hundred dollars a month of your external taxes.
I think that, I think that information was there, and that was, that was a few years back.
It was ignored.
Way back, though.
Marion?
Because I was gonna say, we, we have not, in my time with the town, held a plebiscite regarding the swimming pool. No. We've, we've held open houses, and we've provided surveys at those open houses, but my, at my recollection, we haven't actually held a plebiscite. We held a plebiscite regarding Sunday shopping, but is in the twenty-five years I've been with the town. And we had a good turnout.
Yes, we did.
Counselor Gregory, regarding the pool survey that was done, the result that we had was statistically not valid. There was not even five percent return. It was not valid. We should never have had anyone make a decision on something that was invalid from a statistical point of view. We should never have...
And if we'd done the plebiscite, and we had fifty people show up for the plebiscite, then I would say that that plebiscite wouldn't be of any value either.
That's right.
But if we hold a plebiscite and we get a thousand people come up to vote for it, that gives us a pretty good, that gives us a pretty good indication.
So are we gonna put a number on a plebiscite?
It has to be statistically valid.
It has to be statistically valid. What does that number mean?
Yeah, Marion, I'd like to hear from her. What is the policy provincially on plebiscite? What's the percentage to make it valid?
It's a non-binding.
Yeah, I realize that, but what are they suggesting?
Yeah, what we, you're exactly right. What you would do is put it as a non-binding plebiscite, I guess, is the question, right? We have, I believe, I'm trying to remember my stats from this last election.
Thirteen hundred or something like that.
We had about... I believe we had somewhere over thirteen hundred voters cast. And that was a fairly good percentage of what, all we can estimate that on is the percentage, based on Stats Canada, of individuals over eighteen years of age, right? So I took those numbers, and I think we had somewhere in the range of twenty-six hundred eligible voters.
So we had a little over fifty percent.
So it was, it's actually was quite a strong percentage for...
But compared to Calgary, it definitely was.
Yeah. So, but on a plebiscite, you, you could determine, as council, I don't think you have to have it as part of the plebiscite. I, sorry, I haven't done a lot of research into this.
It's a non-binding.
But you would determine, you know, if you wanna see fifty-one percent or the majority of the eligible voters out before you would deem it to be valid, sufficient, you know, valid numbers for you to make a decision with.
Yeah.
I, I just think that it's an excellent way for us as council to be able to get a feel for where the community sits. All of us run in our own circles.
Yeah.
And so if we listen to the people who are in our own circles, everybody wants one way or the other. one way or the other. But that may not be representative of what our community is. I just think it might be an excellent way for us to...
Go ahead.
Great recommendation.
Yeah. You know, on, I, I think fluoride, like, is straightforward. I mean, you say, do you want it or you don't? I think if we were to do on, on, on chickens, I think what we would need to do first is, is basically draft, uh, a bylaw showing what the restrictions are, actually what we would allow and what we would not allow, so that people would actually know what they're voting on. Because if you say, if you just say, you want chickens in town, or don't you want chickens in town, it doesn't have any meaning to people, and they don't know what they're voting on. So I would, I would suggest that if, before we would have a plebiscite on that, that we would actually draft...
Give them a draft bylaw.
Draft a piece of legislation saying, this is, this is what's allowed, this is what would not be allowed, and so that they actually would know what they would be voting on.
And get their questions answered.
Yeah, yeah, so that, so that it's a fair, a fair question, yeah.
And I, and I don't think you state, do you want chickens in town, do you want chickens in the backyard?
Well, you know, we would just say, say, if, if, if this was the bylaw, that you are allowed, say, four chickens, they have to be, you know, clothed this way, and nobody...
Just a, just a thought, the more complicated you make the question...
That's right.
The less value that answer gives you. I know it sounds kinda counterintuitive, but the, the more complicated the question is, the less people understand what it actually is asked of them.
Well, I think the question could be very simple, but I think it'd be nice to have a bylaw.
If you have that bylaw saying, do you favor this bylaw, that means they have to spend the time to go through and sit down and read the bylaw. And I think you're gonna lose...
You ask the question, period.
Yeah.
I agree. I have a tendency to agree with what you say, but that we take the time to educate the people, there's nothing wrong with that.
That, that has to be a part of it, no question.
Yeah.
Well, I would propose that we recommend to council to have a plebiscite on chickens in town.
Plebiscite or open, or plebiscite?
Plebiscite, non-binding plebiscite, on the chickens and on the Blue Ride.
Together on the same plebiscite?
Well, I, I think that would be wise, from the perspective of costs, and we both, we all know, I think, that they're both issues.
Yeah, and a non-binding.
It's non-binding.
That's in the N G A.
And I would, I would say that we should do it before the summer is on.
Yeah.
How much time do we need, uh, Marion, I'm sorry, but how much time do we need before we need, uh, we put a plebiscite to the people?
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't answer that off the top of my head. I'll have to do a little research before Tuesday's meeting, and then I can establish some time.
Okay, so we leave it open, we leave it open until then, so that in principle...
Yeah.
We'll have that, until you can bring us more information.
Any further discussion on the recommendation?
Oh, I'm just thinking, I, I don't know what's coming down the pipeline, but is there anything else that we've been itching to have a plebiscite on that we could?
No. My, my only, my only concern is that, again, too, too many things on there.
Sure.
I think more than two, and we start losing the validity of, of what we're trying to get on those two.
If you wanna get everybody out to vote, we have an idea.
Oh, yeah. No, that's okay, I don't wanna go there.
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
Talk about it during lunch. Take a medical marijuana.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
It's just a recommendation.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
One second.
Are we at lunch time?
Okay.
Yeah, when we get a recess for lunch?
Less recess, less recess, of course.
All in favor?
We know how rapid, we can't wait. Have a fight to reach.
He needs to have his major general.
So sometime we should all, we're down here, we should all... Yes. I'm waiting for everybody to sit down. Oh, we are all here. We got Bill's not coming back. So we get a motion to reconvene? All in favor? So...
I make a motion to extend the meeting for, for another half hour to, uh, next to seven forty-five?
Um, maybe an hour. I, I would like it to be seven...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter, does it? We, we...
We, we can keep adding some more to it later, but...
Seven forty-five.
Okay. Um, before we quickly continue on our agenda here, Counselor Creed had one question he wanted to address on the food security issue.
It's not directly related to food security, but, uh, and, and has to do with administration. And I'm, I apologize for, I, I probably shouldn't have just asked you ahead of time, but I didn't get a chance, but in the, in the, in the background, or, or for, on the, on the, on the food security, you had a copy of the bylaw, sixteen oh four animal control bylaw, and at, at the end of the, the bylaw, there was, uh, there's two appendices, uh, appendix A and B. And when we, uh, when we passed that bylaw with, with those, with appendix A and B, uh, on this, on this copy, it says, you know, removed on appendix B, uh, the question I had, uh, you know, like, when we did the, 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 you know, gurried bylaw, we, you know, it got the wrong, wrong thing attached, and so, you know, we had to really redo it. And what I, what I was, kind of the question is, is that I, I went back and pulled out my copy of, from when this was, uh, was passed in September of two thousand and eleven, when third reading was given, uh, it still had, you know, that, uh, appendix B attached to it. And so, and I, and I don't recall ever council rescinding, rescinding that appendix B. I mean, at the time, I had some, some questions and concerns about it, but it was never officially rescinded as a, as council, so I just...
I'll look into that, Counselor. I, I, um, but I'll research it and bring it back.
Okay, thank you. And like I say, I'm sorry, I should've just talked to you sooner, but I didn't find it till just before the meeting, I was looking at it. And so, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so, on our new business, uh, we have some information here to look at our two thousand and fourteen final budget. Marion, would you like to address us on this one?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Trowan. How I'm going to, to discuss the budget with you tonight is, you were provided two documents in your package. The first is the actual budget, um, which has the two thousand and thirteen total, two thousand and fourteen budget that was approved December tenth, two thousand and thirteen, and then the budget that we're presenting tonight. Um, there's a lot of explanation, there are a lot of things that were carried forward from two thousand and thirteen, a couple of minor changes to, let's say, C P A, those kind of changes that we don't learn about until early into the year. So I'm not gonna take your time tonight to go through those minute details, but there is a couple of things that I'd like to draw your attention to, if I may. On account number one oh seven eight four one, provincial conditional grants.
What page are we on here?
Page one.
It is the third highlighted.
In the big, in the bright space.
Is it in that first, yeah. Do you have it?
Oh, Counselor, this is on your tablet. That's not the document I provided you tonight.
All right, let's go. All right. I wonder I'm not finding it? I'd easily confuse it three times. Do it one more time.
Can you help Counselor Barnes as well?
I'm just thinking of this, uh...
And rotate it.
One of them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if you wanna close that one, right out of the way for now, I'll give you the full screen.
All right, okay, what's going on here, Jeff?
I'm coming, Counselor.
All upside down here.
Oh, you're gonna be, you're gonna be right side up.
All right.
There you go.
All right.
Everybody's good.
Okay, what number was that again, then?
One oh seven seven nine zero.
So, account number one oh seven...
Unconditional grant?
Provincial conditional other.
Other, yep.
Um, the, that total was increased by thirty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The thing I want to draw your attention to is included in that is we have the increase in the M S I operating of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
This right here?
Yeah, that was unexpected. Uh, if you remember, when those announcements came out, we talked about that. Now, we had planned for that to be eliminated by two thousand, by two thousand and sixteen. So we'll talk a little bit about this later, but just keep that in mind if you would. The next one I wanna draw your attention to is under fire rent, one two three five six zero.
What's on, on the red side?
Okay, it's, uh, now twenty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's an increase of seven thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, and I was able to negotiate a new lease with Alberta Health Services for the lease on the fire hall. That money transfers directly to the, to the fire department to help them cover the costs of their operations there for utilities, so, um...
Marion, these changes have gone through the, uh, through the audit also?
No, no, no.
No, this is just the budget presentation.
Okay.
This is a budget we're going to approve today.
Okay.
Okay, but on the next page, um, the first two that are highlighted on that page are for the domestic garbage, and both, uh, the domestic was reduced by fifty-eight hundred and fifty-two, and the commercial by twenty-three hundred and nine dollars. This is all revenue, and that was related to the wrong schedule in that garbage bylaw. So we've accounted for that. On account number one seven two seven zero two, which is golf course revenue, that is decreased by ten thousand dollars, and that's due to, um, the new contract that we anticipated signing.
Good spelling there.
I, yeah, I noticed that too. Sorry about that.
An S.
Um, on the next page, uh, one nine four five nine two land reserves, we increased that by two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's for capital projects that are coming forward from two thousand and thirteen. So there was some projects, and you'll see that occasionally through the budget, that through the audit process, there was identified projects that have either not begun or had not been completed due to a number of reasons, and so they'll be carried forward into two thousand and fourteen, so that we don't tax for those bumps, right? So we bring the revenue and the expense forward. The next one I wanna bring your attention to is the next line item there, um, and the item there I want to note is that there was some projects brought forward from two thousand and thirteen, but we also removed twenty-three hundred and eighty-one dollars for the bylaw truck, and you'll see that later in our discussions as well. I'll talk a little bit about the expense.
So they did not, not to sell and not to buy?
Well, yeah, I guess I'll speak to it right now. Um, I talked with the county, they haven't made a decision at this point in time, but based on our shared service review and recommendations that came from there, if we do go to some type of a bylaw consortium, um, Murray and I both felt that potentially that truck could be used in that vein anyway, and could possibly be part of their contribution to that, so we just, we just kinda put it on hold for now until that decision's made. So we just took it on the budget provision.
Makes sense.
So it's still gonna be there for our use, if and when we need it?
I just, yeah, I asked Maria, if you do decide to sell it, please let us know, because I can come to council and, and, and propose that in the future, if, if they do decide to sell it. Okay?
If it happened in the next year, before the next budget cycle, how would we fund that at that point? Would we just be, decide to take something from reserves, or?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could either do it through land reserves, we've got some in the bylaw reserve account. We would have to determine that at that time. Okay? Um, the next page, if you'll go to that, we're now into expenses, and like I said, I'm not gonna go through all the detail, just I'm gonna highlight some of these. If you go to account two one two five oh one, office general and telephone expense, we've increased that by three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for that telephone call-out system for emergency preparedness. And then, the next item that's highlighted is miscellaneous public relations. We also increased that by thirty-five hundred dollars, because we are purchasing some additional emergency preparedness supplies. So we're looking, the flashlights are one of the things that we, um, we've purchased, but we'd like to have some of those items on hand to be able to distribute to the public for their emergency preparedness as well. So we've just increased that slightly, okay? The next page, the item I'd like to draw your attention to is account two three two five oh one, street materials. We've increased that by fifteen thousand dollars, and that is for additional crack filling. Um, we've met with our contractor, been on-site, uh, we feel that we will extend the life of the pavement in, in a number of areas if we just do some additional crack filling. So, uh, we thought that that was a good preventative, um, measure to take.
Seems like it's working on our end.
Just if I could comment, one of the issues we have in this country, and, you know, when you get snowfalls and May and things like that, is we have a lot of moisture that go down those cracks in the concrete.
Nice.
And it's gonna be five below, six below tonight, it's gonna freeze. And so, even our brand-new asphalt, like this parking lot here, has a couple of huge cracks across it, just 'cause of this time of year with frost heat, right? So, we've tried it in a few streets, like Counselor Benry said, our street has a number that, that was the first year they tried it on, so we're gonna try and enhance that a little bit.
And it worked?
Seems to be holding up pretty well.
Desert cracks, yeah.
Uh, Gary Marshall, yeah. Okay, so the rest of the changes there, for the next couple of pages, are, um, just minor changes or moving things around, uh, some insurance work that still had to be done on some of the roads, those kind of things.
Could I, could I back up just a minute?
Of course.
Question, on that crack filling, who's gonna do that now that Gary Marshall's not well?
My understanding is he has a succession plan in place. Another individual.
He's got somebody taking over the business, who's working with him now.
Yeah, he has a spartan, that's going to take it forward.
Okay, account two six one two hundred, and that's, I think, three pages forward for planning general.
Two six one, all right, top of the, two, two hundred?
Planning general.
Yep.
Um, the one thing I wanna bring your attention to there, there's two of them, actually, uh, the thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars is, we've been working with, uh, associated engineering, trying to get a price, a price we felt we could live with, for the update to our infrastructure master plan. And it's taken a long time with some back and forth, but, um, we've got them down to this price. I know it still looks like a lot of money, but it started substantially higher than that. So we've included that in the budget this year, and, um...
I, I should mention, if I could, Marion, the reason we've been able to bring that down is Brandon is able to take on much more of what's needed to accomplish that.
And, yeah, I was gonna speak to that.
Well, sorry, spill your thunder now.
Yeah. Later on in the capital budget, you'll see that we're purchasing some equipment to allow Brandon to do that specifically, which is some monitoring equipment and some of that. So it has been a real good win-win situation for us, but it's reduced that cost of that master plan upgrade substantially.
Well, one thing I was happy about, if I might too, is we had to do flow monitoring in our sanitary system for this, and we got a quote to do it. We're able to buy flow monitors and own them for cheaper than one year of a contractor coming up to do the work. And Brandon can do that long-term, and he can, we can place them wherever we like, around the town on an as-needed basis, and to purchase three of them was less than the contractor to do it just on four lines this year.
Wow.
So because Brandon is familiar with them and comfortable with them, we thought that was a, a good thing to do. So we answered it long-term.
Okay. So now I am going to take you to two more pages, the third page ahead of that, to, um, account two seven two seven six two, recreation transfer to reserves.
Seven, will you say it again? Two seven two...
Two seven two seven six two.
Six two.
Okay. That is, if you remember the discussion, where we were going to reserve a portion of that money, so that it can go, um, towards the tot lot, and we weren't gonna do it this year because of the cost of the mower, I believe it was.
Yeah, the three-wheel mower.
So that now moves from capital into operations, because it's a transfer to reserves, which So that now moves from capital into operations because it's a transfer to reserves, which is no longer capital. And if you go down to light transfer to reserves, two-nine-two-seven-six-three. The digger truck, and, sorry, the bucket truck and the trencher came in just slightly over what we anticipated. So we're just reducing the transfer to reserve for the digger truck in the future by seventy-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. So those are the major changes that we made to the operating budget.
How about the grants down on one-oh-seven-eight-fifty-two? You've got quite an increase there.
Okay, that's into the capital. I'm just going to get there now.
Just capital.
So.
I don't care where it is, I want to see it.
Right, if we get into. So I'm going to go through the capital in a little more detail than I did on the operational side. So infrastructure provincial, that was increased sixty-one thousand and ninety-seven dollars for MSI funding. And obviously, that will be offset by a capital project. The infrastructure federal was increased by thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine, and that is the CIF grant that we have remaining from 2013 that is transferred forward as part of the audit process for the pool. Grants other, we increased that by a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred. We included in there a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we anticipate receiving from the CFEP grant on the water slide. And also the seventy-five hundred dollars from the Lethbridge Community Foundation that we've just been made aware we were awarded. And both of those projects are pretty cool.
Just a question on that CFEP grant there, is that one of those matching dollar grants?
It's a one from the road tour.
We have to do fundraising to, or whatever.
To meet the other hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That is the one with the program in place in a town, you know, to raise money, and you could see there's quite a big contribution. And then the swim club is going to do some fundraisers to try to match it amount.
Right, we can use like the community, Lethbridge Community Foundation can be used as part of that matching money. So there's a number of.
Donors.
Matching dollars.
So we don't have to sell cakes and pies at an auction for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
There may be some grassroots fundraising that will be required, but we're pretty comfortable that even if we have to, we can draw from the expenses on the pool to match this because it's a fairly related project. So I don't think we'll need to, but if we have to, there's a lot of prep work and everything for the water slides that we can put all that towards it as well.
The reason I'm asking this question is that last night at our Parks and Recreation meeting, Randy didn't seem to know where that matching money was going to come from yet. So maybe, I don't know, maybe I want to chat with him because he was concerned. The talk was about doing all kinds of fundraisers.
Well, we think there's a need and we're, if I might, I know one of the conversations that Randy wanted to have last night is we still feel there's a need to get the community engaged in this.
Yes.
So we're asking to engage the general population. We're getting good response from the business community and some of those people we've targeted there, but I asked him if he could do a little brainstorm on what are some ways that we can engage the community generally? And it might be a good old-fashioned beginning in there. I don't know.
We came up with a few of those ideas, not that they were great ideas.
So those may be integral parts of it. If we have a shortfall after a major push and pull.
Right, we could use those activities to pop it up.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Over onto the next page, street improvement grant, that was increased by a hundred and twenty dollars. And that's just, it was just balancing on the capital, it was the grant to the local, right? The capital projects to the local. Contributed assets, ten thousand dollars now. That is ten thousand dollars that we anticipate the county's in-kind contribution on the pool for the remaining requirement. That's all we'll be able to use of their in-kind at this point, but we will use their commitment in the future as we need for the project.
Marian, can you remind us, their in-kind was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Hundred and twenty-five. Hundred and twenty-five cash and a hundred and twenty-five in kind.
Okay.
So how much of the in-kind will we actually use?
We used thirty-eight thousand, I believe, was on our financial statements last year for 2013, and that, this will be ten, so right around that fifty thousand each out of that. Okay. From reserves capital, so we increased that by three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
Can you give us the account number?
Oh, sorry, it's the next one, one-nine-five-five-nine-two.
Say that again?
One-nine-five-five-nine-two.
Oh, oh, I see, there it is, yeah, right there.
Okay, thanks.
We'll get you a towel over there.
No, it's okay.
Just be more careful.
So this is a number of, this is what we're transferring from reserves to cover capital projects, okay? So capitalization policy, that was reduced by three-hundred-and-five dollars again. We're just balancing things out. The bylaw truck was six thousand dollars less. The pool reserve was a hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-six dollar increase. So that'll go to the pool project. Recreation reserve for the players' bench was ten thousand dollar increase, and that's because we got a quote on the players' benches in Lions, or sorry, Redford Park to replace, and it was substantially higher than what we anticipated about devil. We have ten budget, and it's going to cost us about twenty to do those properly. The electrical reserve was thirty thousand dollar increase from the balancing pool credit, so from. Grand amounts forward for twenty, from 2013 for projects was a hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-one. So those were projects that weren't completed in 2013 and are being moved forward, and this is the funding to be allocated against those capital projects, okay? Get into the expenses. Bylaw capital, as I said, we reduced that by thirty thousand dollars because we took the bylaw truck out. The next account, capital sidewalk replacement, we increased that by nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Ninety-seven hundred and eighty-three to finish the curb and gutter on First Street East, Second and Third Avenue from that building forward from 2013. And that is the curb and gutter across from Southwest Concrete where we had to put that new storm line in. We didn't finish it last year because we wanted to have the storm line in before we put the curb and gutter in. And an additional ten thousand for the Ninth Street West curb and gutter due to increased cost of cement and gravel. So again, Brandon has put out the tenders. We have a better idea of what our actual costs are going to be, so that was increased by law.
Question.
Yes.
Is it wise for us to take that bylaw truck out of our budget? If for some, for an old reason other than that doesn't come through, do we still need to look to replace that bylaw truck?
Well, it's not a necessity immediately. It is in the plans for our fleet replacement. The reason we have it in this year is because we thought, if the county truck comes available, let's pick it up for a deal. Because it was going to be, obviously, being used vehicle, and it's already all decked out for bylaw enforcement. We felt that it was an opportunity we should take advantage of. So that's the reason that it was in this year. But it is planned for our fleet replacement in future years. Thank you.
Two years, maybe, or three?
Yeah.
It's a wastewater truck, and then I think it's in there.
What's the life expectancy of our current bylaw truck?
Well, we can drive them till there's no floor roll block. In the last six years, we have taken the approach of replacing one fleet vehicle per year. And we still have some vehicles in our fleet that would be around twenty years.
Yeah, our average age was pushing the late eighties six years ago. And, but now we're in much better shape. We've still got one or two of those older ones, but that's about it. We're getting them down.
What are the costs for keeping those in good running order? I mean, we paid.
It hasn't been two thousand, a couple of them.
Lately, it's been a lot better. But one of the reasons, for example, we got rid of, you might remember, we had a Green Dodge.
Yep.
And it wasn't one of the older trucks. But Tim and Cole came in and said, that thing's going to start costing us fortune here pretty soon. So it went. You know, we do look at not just the age or the condition before we got the transmissions in them or other things like that to cost a fortune. So, yeah, we got rid of that one this last year, even though it wasn't, I mean, I think it was a two thousand. It wasn't that old.
And in this year's budget, you'll see, I'll talk about it in a minute here, but you know, our worst vehicle we had in the fleet was the planning.
The little S-ten?
That little S-ten that Dave Burrows drove for.
Nineteen-eighty?
His entire career.
Did we give that away yet?
Poor guy. So, but I'll talk to that in just a minute. But we do, we do try to replace one a year, and we're trying to get the fleet to a condition that it isn't costing us a lot to operate that. But we don't expect to be driving all brand-new vehicles either, right? There has to be, there has to be some rationale for this, okay? The next is public works capital. We increased that by fifty-five hundred dollars for a Lincoln welder, and it's because our welder just died on us.
It's a portable unit?
Yeah.
It's a portable unit.
The next change in the budget was storm sewer capital. We increased that by forty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-nine because we're bringing fifty thousand dollars forward from 2013 for that storm sewer drainage behind the TD Bank there. And sixty-four hundred and forty-one dollars for catch basins at Kirk's Tire. I'm going to have, I'm going to have to look at that account.
Do you want to say that?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I look at that and it's not making sense to me. So I'll look at that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Noel has been off with the flu for the last two days, and she's been trying to finalize all of this for me from home. And so I really appreciate what she's done in the last couple of days for us.
I think, if I might, Marian, I think what we moved forward was just the forty-three-five-fifty-nine from last year.
Yes, I think it's.
So that plus the sixty-four hundred for the drainage gets fifty dollars. I think the verbage is just right.
Yes, I think so too, but it doesn't make sense, so I'll just check on that tomorrow. Water capital, we increased that by twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five, a thousand and fifty, to reflect the actual cost of the self-prime irrigation pump, and that's the pump that we replaced for the golf course irrigation that they need prior to level irrigation coming on. And twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to complete the water treatment plant U V projects.
Did we ever get some grant money for this one?
Yes.
So we did.
Waterline extension, we increased that by two-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-hundred. And both of those projects are projects that are coming forward from 2013.
Question is, are we going to leave that money in there until we get, before we get the results from the study for the project done by the health board?
Yes, I would suggest we are because we've carried that forward since. Probably, this is probably the fourth year it's been carried forward. Community irrigation line, that was increased by fifty-eight hundred and sixty-four, and that was an engineering invoice that came to us early in the year that had been missed in the original project. But that just finalizes everything on that community irrigation line. Sanitary sewer, we increased that by thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty. This is what we were talking about earlier with Brandon being able to do some on our infrastructure master and other projects for the town. So we purchased three, or will purchase, three flow meters at twenty-two-five-sixty for monitoring, and an increased cost that is well on the Fourth Avenue sewer line by ten thousand dollars to include the replacement of two manholes. We want to make sure that that project is done properly, so we've added a couple of manholes there.
Those flow meters there, is that the ones you were talking about that Brandon's going to do? And that much money was going to be charged just to come and do it once?
The quote's thirty-seven grand.
That's good money then spent.
Yeah.
We need a motion to extend the meeting until eight-fifteen.
No, I think way through.
You keep trumping.
We're making the motion.
Yes.
Do you have a second lunch?
Sanitary sewer line suspension, we increased that by a hundred and ten thousand. And again, those are projects brought forward from 2013 that we continue to carry until such times as they are completed. One is the West Industrial and the other is a subdivision of Golf Course. The next page, two-six-one-seven-six-two, planning capital, we increased that by forty-two thousand nine hundred. We had a decrease in the truck purchase. We actually, from what we had budgeted, to purchase a 2014 model, we were able to get a 2013 model, brand-new. It's not white, but I don't know if you've seen Brandon's new truck. Twenty-thirteen model with the box.
And the lights.
And the lights and.
And the rolling bed in the back.
And a backup B. They put a number of extras on there, and we still saved seventy-one hundred dollars. So CSL was fantastic to work with us on that truck, and so kudos to them. And we also added fifty thousand for the West Industrial, which was brought over from 2013. Parks capital, that was reduced by two-thousand-and-eighty-four. The mower was seventy-nine hundred and sixteen more than the previous estimate. We removed the twenty thousand for the tot lot and put that twelve thousand to reserve, and we added the ten thousand for the players' bench. That's coming forward from 2013. Pool capital increased to four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So that's three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand to complete the pool and water slide, and fifty thousand for the design of the building.
How much is this water slide cost to some ash?
About two-hundred-and-fifty is what we have.
That'll be a little.
It's pretty hard, it's pretty hard to have a pool anymore without a good water slide with it.
It's two, if that makes you feel any better.
You go down one and up the other.
Everybody can hear that way.
Shoot it into the tennis court.
Civic center capital, that's twenty-five thousand dollar increase there, and that is insurance money that's coming forward to replace this acid table and other units in here from the hail damage still. And light capital, increased by thirty-six thousand three hundred and forty-nine. That was an increase in the price of the electrical truck of sixty-three hundred and eighty-five and the trencher fourteen hundred and sixty-four. Plus, we added thirty thousand for the electrical servicing for the subdivision that was brought forward from 2013. Again, those Atkins projects just continue to carry forward. And then the electrical investment, reduced the electrical investment by fifteen hundred dollars. And I know that's a whole lot of detailed explanation there, but. What it comes down to in bottom line, and we feel that this is a fairly good budget. We have not been extravagant in any way. We've tried to meet council's priorities from the discussions that we've had. So with having the same tax implication of two-point-five-six million dollars that was approved December tenth of 2013, we have a surplus of a hundred and one thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Should we clap? Not yet. I can always find a way to spend it. I'm waiting for my recommendation. So that being said, what I put in front of you tonight was some options with regards to no rate. So I'll start with those, and then I'll give you my recommendation. Are you okay with that, if we go through those and then?
Marian, Marian, we'll go ahead. We have no tourist hut capital. What's happening there?
We don't anticipate any capital investment this year.
So there's no investment at all going into that tourist hut?
We have a little bit of operational expense, but you look in at the capital piece, so. We have a little bit of operational expense, but you look in at the capital piece, so we don't anticipate any major capital, anything over five thousand capital on the building.
Okay.
Okay. The second document that you have, maybe I should just explain, I believe is in your package, it says longer, it's the capital, and it basically just shows you how each of the projects are funded by what source, okay? Did you have that in your package?
Ours are in yellow.
It should have been in your package.
No, no.
Oh, it's not?
And it was on my package, but I saw it online.
Oh, I maybe said not to put it in.
It is, it is online.
Yeah, it is on, it's in the mail.
It's on here, it's on the side, yeah.
Oh, where else is it?
It's okay, I'm not gonna go through it. It's just if you peruse it, you can see where the capital projects are proposed to be funded from. Uh, so that's there for your information. Okay, let's look at these schedules. Now, these are the ones that I put in front of you tonight with a little yellow. And at the top, it says budget mail rate comparison worksheet. Are we all there?
This one.
Yeah. Okay, so if we look at option one, so this is going on with the budget that I just presented you. Um, option one, what we've done, if you go down to the row that says two thousand and fourteen, if we leave the mail rate the same, okay, so you can see municipal seven-point-four-nine-one-two. Um, obviously, the school changed because that's, comes from the province, it reduced on residential, um, from two-point-seven-three-zero-two to two-point-five-zero-five-zero. Uh, the non-residential municipal thirteen-point-one-through-two-two, and the school non-residential is an increase from three-point-seven-five-nine-four to three-point-eight-three-one-eight. Under that scenario, we would raise, with the change in assessment, okay, we would raise an additional one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars.
Say it again, one under there?
One-hundred-and-nine-six-thirty-two.
Yeah.
If you take the current surplus of a hundred and one thousand six hundred and sixty-four that is proposed in that budget, would leave us a surplus of two-hundred-and-one-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-six dollars. We have right around twenty-six thousand dollars in tax adjustments that we have to make every year, and that's, um, there's some agreements in place like the annexation agreement and some of those things that we have to adjust, um, the amount that those people would pay based on our assessment and our mail rate. So that would leave us, in that scenario, with a surplus of a hundred and eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. Okay?
That's with zero increase.
That is leaving the mail rate the same.
Hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars.
The same as probably set in?
The same mail rate we had in two thousand.
Oh, the same as last year?
Yes, last year. Now, I want you to look at, um, column, it's just, it's the fourth to the right column where it says percentage change in total mail rate from previous year. So when you include the school tax, that would reduce the residential by two-point-one-two percent, and it would increase the non-residential by point-four-five percent in the mail rate. Okay? Does that make sense?
So we don't, we don't have the, uh, requisition for the seniors?
Yes, it's included in our portion.
So you put it in, in the discount?
If you look under other, the sixty-six thousand, that's the home for the agents.
I, I got it, thanks.
All right, so let's skip now to option two. Option two is a proposed reduction in the mail rate of three-point-three-two percent or approximately. Now, that's a rounded number, okay? We would raise the additional twenty-six thousand and thirty-three dollars that we would, we would need to, uh, to offset those adjustments we have to make.
Was that three-point, what is it again?
Three-point-three-two percent reduction in the mail rate.
That's tall.
That combined residential.
No, no, that's just in the municipal mail rate. Okay?
It would drop from thirteen-point-one-through-two to twelve-point-seven-one-of-seven.
Right. On non-residential, on residential, it would drop from seven-point-four-nine-one-two to seven-point-two-five-zero-seven.
It's her last line.
How's that down? It's this line here on the very bottom.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, right there.
Yeah, please compare those two things, that's what you have.
Okay, I'm talking about, I'm talking about three-point-three-two percent reduction in the municipal mail rate.
From last year.
Right. If you look at the total percentage again, including school, it would mean a reduction of four-point-four-two percent for residential and a reduction of two-point-zero-two percent for non-residential. Okay? Does that make sense? Now, that does leave us with a surplus of about seventy-five thousand dollars, but I'm gonna talk to that in just a minute here, because we gotta figure out how to spend any surplus we have.
Right.
Um, okay, option three. Well, let me back up, let's, let's go to option two. In option two, what our recommendation would be is that the surplus be used to offset capital projects that we're bringing for, bringing from our land reserve. Instead of using land reserve, we use that money to fund capital projects. And I'll tell you why. In the budget, I told you, we had a sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in our M S I operating. We know that that's leading, so if we reduce taxes and use that money, we've, next year we may have to increase taxes to include that. So we feel that that should be, our recommendation to council would be that that money be spent basically for a one-time, one-off, um, cost, and that it not be included in the operational. Okay? So option two would allow us to take that seventy-five thousand dollar surplus, um, plus the, I think Noel has included the twenty-six thousand adjustment in there, and we would be able to put those, that money towards those capital investments and reduce the amount we're taking from land reserves. Okay? Option three, um, would be proposed to reduce the residential mail rate from seven-point-four-nine-one-two to six-point-nine-five-eight-one, and the non-residential from thirteen-point-one-through-two-to-two-to-twelve-point-one-nine-seven-eight. That would be a reduction of seven-point-six-five percent in our municipal mail rate. We would raise seventy-five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars less than what we have in this budget. If you add back on the current surplus, that would leave us with the twenty-six thousand dollars that we need for those tax adjustments. And so what that means is we would spend that seventy-five thousand dollar surplus on operations, or the extra sixty-seven thousand that we're getting from our sub on operations. But I thought it was important for council to see, if we went with the budget as it currently sits, your mail rate would reduce by seven-point-six-five percent, but there potentially could be an impact long-term.
Yes, cannot, uh, talk to you, since we have a surplus one way or the other, or we can eliminate the surplus by reducing the mail rate. I'd like to know something regarding a program that we're trying to put in place, which is a gang task. We have not received yet the approval on a grant, but we also know that we need to do something, uh, moving forward. And I'm wondering if we would be wise to consider an option that would allow us to move forward with, without having the result of that, uh, grant given to us at this point? Because it's a social, social program that needs to be addressed.
The question I would have is, do you have an idea what that amount would be required to do that?
What is a grant?
One, just to be clear, if the school is the applicant for the grant.
And how much is required?
The total is a hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
It was a large amount.
No, it was more than that, sorry, it was more than that.
Okay.
It was pushing like.
Okay. The, what I was invested in that grant is a portion that would have been allocated to the town for safety, uh, the camera program. I don't know how much money we're talking.
Right.
But maybe we should keep that in mind as a project that could be worthwhile regarding safety, security of our town. And I think maybe we don't want to forget that one. And maybe go ahead as a town and think, there is a little bit of surplus, can we use that portion and make us independent of that grant essentially?
Yes, we could. Whatever council decides to do with the amount that is surplus currently in this proposed budget, um, the only concern I have is the sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Right, I understand.
If you chose to add that to the budget, add sixty-seven thousand dollars of camera purchase to the budget, then it's a one-time expense, right? I, I just don't want you to absorb that into the operational costs.
No, I appreciate what you say, but I think maybe it's worthwhile rethinking that item and try to see if we should not put it as one budget item to be funded through the surplus of some sort.
The, the initial proposal that we got, and it was a very thorough proposal because we were putting in this grant application, was a hundred thousand dollars. Now, I'm not suggesting that we couldn't do something a little less, but remember, when we were, this grant, if I'm not mistaken, was almost a half a million dollars, as I'm thinking about it. So we were looking at what would be the ultimate system. Now, it's not to say there isn't a scalable system that we could start with that would be very effective at thirty or forty thousand dollar gap. I would imagine we could do anything in between and make it scalable, but I, I don't have anything to substantiate that.
But I really think if we want to address a social issue and a crime issue or whatever that is, I think we would be wise to start this year to look at it. I don't know how council feel about it.
Mister Chairman, just one thought on that. We did that quote as the ultimate system with, you know, this was all wireless with the servers in the town office and twenty, you know, megabyte cameras all over the place. And we've looked at some options of getting five or six little portable units and putting them in strategic businesses downtown on an as-needed basis, and you'd be four thousand bucks into that. You know, there are scalable options if it's something, if it comes that we're not getting that grant, any or all of it, then maybe we need to look at some alternatives. And I'm thinking maybe I have an intern that would love to look into a number of security options that we could entertain.
Well, it's just an option.
If, if council is giving us direction, if we put, say, ten thousand dollars of that towards some kind of, uh, portable camera, what I'm hearing here is I think we could accomplish at least the first step of that with.
Well, maybe it's worth looking at.
Or do you want to, would you like to allocate, and I'm just throwing some options up there, but, um.
I mean, let's hit twenty thousand dollars as a maximum.
The other thing, um, Madam Mayor, that we may want to entertain is, I'm not sure if that same grant won't become open again sometime this year, and perhaps they're blocking it, this large grant application, and maybe a seventy-five thousand dollar application from the town is more palatable, and we can look at that. I don't know the details of how often they've, it hasn't been around for a while and we brought it forward in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, so if we were to put ten thousand down as a limit for ourselves, we know at least we can match it if we, we have a grant.
We could probably sip a program like that, C I P, for something like that, match it, but we could, you know, we can look.
So I would, I would recommend that council set aside ten thousand dollars toward security of a long time. That's something that we have been asked over and over and over, and we haven't done nothing about it.
But once we get the, once we get that situation, what are we gonna do about it?
Well, that is something that we want to address essentially, is do one intern to be able to have proof, to be able to leave when there is an incident, and be able to have the proof we need to then give to the R C M P to do their business. Essentially, that told us, because they have no proof, they cannot prosecute anybody.
Yeah, potentially, you could put the cameras with video surveillance signage. Um, it may stop some of the deterrent of the drug trade and those kind of things that may be happening.
But if we looked at that option, we use it, the four thousand dollar option, is just as good if not better.
And I'm pulling numbers, I just know a few years ago, we bought a small portable.
We do have a couple that we can.
We have one portable now, yeah, that we can move around, and I think we spent six hundred bucks on it or something.
That's the one that blew the back alley for a while.
Yeah, like we, we went to the T D Bank, for example, and they let us put it in the window of the T D Bank and plug it in there. You know, there's some options, they're not high-end stuff, but they can do the job. Um, if we're really looking, if the value in it is largely as deterrent, so it's posted and there's visible cameras and it's a deterrent, there's some value in it.
So.
But, but all this is a little bit anecdotal right now, because it's been a long time since I've looked at it.
Right.
But we can get some hard numbers.
Would, would the council agree to set aside ten thousand dollars if this lasts fine? And to use it as a matching grant whilst?
I, I mean, the first thing I tried was match it somewhere.
Exactly.
Whatever was set aside.
The more we match, the better it is.
Yeah. I, I think, I think ten thousand dollars is a reasonable number.
Does not match up our surplus?
No. Of course, that surplus all depends on which option we go with too.
Yeah, but if, even with the option two, you still have a lot of.
Yeah, my recommendation to council was option two.
That's why I was just looking at. And I'd like you to go through the figures, let, let go through the figures on offer before we look at that ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars is, is peanuts as far as I'm concerned, in something like. But I, I'd like to really look at option two. Because that strikes me as a good option.
And that's the one that comes up with the surplus of how much?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. And, and before we move on, I just wanna get this in my mind. Option one, is this status quo right now?
Option one is if the mail rate were to remain the same.
As it is right now.
As it is, was, was in two thousand and thirteen, but remember, assessments change. So I'll talk to you about.
Yes, right.
That's on some more sheets that are put. Let, let's maybe look at the impact of, of that. The ten thousand dollars on option two would only minutely change the mail rate scenario, right? Okay, so if council's looking at that, um, that option, let's look at the tax rate comparison, uh, property sheets that I gave you there. I, I, if I hear you correctly, you don't wanna consider option three, right? You don't wanna reuse taxes to, to offset that.
I, I think it brings us too close to the wire.
Yeah.
And too close to the wire is uncomfortable.
Say long-term, it ain't up the.
Yeah, if we didn't have that sixty-seven thousand dollar aside, we really only had about a thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, we, we, it's, it's too close to the wire.
And then next year, you see a big jump.
No.
Because we gotta cover that.
Potentially.
Well, with, with the assessments that have come out, have they gone up or have they gone down?
That's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna talk to you about right now.
Okay.
So if you take the tax rate comparison, two thousand and fourteen residential mail rate, municipal portion, option two, okay?
Yep.
So, all those, and I, you don't have names on there, um, but it gives you a sense. I have names on mine, so I know whose properties it was. names on mine, so I know whose properties it are, but it gives you a sense if you look at the column just to the left of the yellow, it says percentage of increase/decrease using the 2013 mail rate, okay?
So if you just send a normal...
So keeping the mail rate the same, we range anywhere from a thirteen point five seven percent reduction to an eleven point four one percent increase. Now, a couple of those are anomalies.
Oh, they're anomalies though.
Mary, can we know why there is such an increase? Is that the type of house?
I mean, it's residential.
The one, the one that has a substantial increase is because they did some major renovations to the home.
Renovation, yeah, okay.
So their assessment would have increased from that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The one that was a significant decrease was because of the rate class of the home. There was some changes there. And, let me see, the other one, there was another one that was six point four percent, just below the minus thirteen point seven, and that one is based on, there was a sale and the sale was higher than the assessed value, and so that had to be taken into account of the assessment. So average percentage increase/decrease there was one point one four percent. That's if we kept the 2013 mail rate. But again, that would give us an additional hundred and nine thousand dollars, which we don't, have to be careful how I say, forget them on camera sometimes. We don't necessarily need a two hundred thousand dollar surplus, right?
Right.
I mean, it's, it's just a fact. We, we could always spend it, but we don't need to spend it, that's the point.
Mary, in your average, did you include those two anomalies?
Uh, yes, it would include those two. If you look at them...
Because you almost wash each other though.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, almost.
So if you look at them, you know, the averages, some of them are under one percent, some are around two percent, so even if without those two kind of anomalies...
What's your deal for our booze community?
We'll get to that in just a minute. So that's a percentage of increase if we use the 2013 mail rate. If we use option two, go to the far right-hand column, those same properties, the percentage increase using 2014 option two mail rate estimated, everyone except the one anomaly, which was because of the sale, sees a decrease, and the other one that had the major renovations for their home. So on average, using option two, it shows an average three point two one percent decrease in the municipal portion of their taxes. You're on option two, first page.
First page, Barbara.
It says option three on it, but...
No, there's, there's an option two and an option three. This one's option two. I feel like...
That's this one, right?
No, we need to group that.
Yep.
And all this says option two.
So sorry.
Yeah.
How's that? Okay.
This is strictly residential, right?
This is strictly residential. So taking into account option two, and like I said, if we include the ten thousand, it's going to make a slight change to that, but nothing substantial, right? You're still probably going to see just over three percent decrease. Now, remember, this is in the municipal portion, okay? We're only talking about municipal portion. You go to the second page, you've got, we only have four comparisons there, and what we try to do is get some sort of...
I don't think you...
We took specific properties to try and identify a class of properties and, and cover them all without doing too many of them. So if we were to leave the rate the same, again, if you look at the column just in the middle, percentage of increase using the 2013 mail rate, those were all less than one If you look at the percentage using the 2014 option two, you are, okay, let me, the second property there, I apologize, it shows a percentage increase of twenty-eight point eight, but again, that's a property that had, a commercial property that had major renovations. Their assessment changed significantly. So the other, there's two properties here that actually would reduce by one point four percent and one by two point zero three percent, and one that would just slightly increase by one point five, but again, their assessment increased in 2014's assessment year because of some improvements to the property.
I suggest...
Okay. I know this is all a lot, a lot to absorb at one time.
It's not so much a question as an observation. Personally, I feel that to, I can read too much as a surplus is maybe not the wisest for the taxpayer. To have no surplus or hardly any is not wise for the town. So option two to me seems to me the wise choice to make, to have a little bit of money to protect the loss of the MSI, the potential of the mill to come. And to have a little bit of that reserve at, at hand if we need to dig without taxing any more next year.
Well, we've got a lot of seniors that are still building their own homes and we don't want to recognize that. We've got some businesses down there that are struggling, and option two doesn't bear a big burden on them.
Option two offers a conservative estimate of taxes that I think is possible to absorb.
One other thing I'd just like to point out, if, if we're going to look at option two, if you look at what the rates were, the mail rate was in 2011 and what we're proposing can be in 2014, that is a reduction of about six point six percent over that period of time in municipal mail rate. So I think that council, you know, has been very conservative in their approach to budgeting.
And in reverse, administration has made a great effort to find trust-saving measures all of the possible, and I appreciate very much all the efforts that have been made on recommendation of council to keep the taxes at the rates that can be affordable in this town.
Well, I think that's also indicative of the council there that...
Oh, yes.
We are, we are very conscious of the cost involved in our community, and I don't want to go too reverse too much.
Or we got to think of inflation too.
Exactly. But how did, option two will give us how much of a...
Seventy-five thousand.
Well, it'll, what, what we would propose to do is take, we would take less from landers or, and find public projects and, and which it probably is a little bit more... Yeah, gets you about a three point three percent reduction in the mail rate.
Do you need a motion?
No, you can't. I need, I need a recommendation here to, to add the ten thousand and which option we'd like to choose, and then we'll bring the bylaw forward at the May thirteenth council.
Can we just answer, I'm just like, I'll take that motion. Yeah, yeah.
Just one more item. Probably very small item, but we need to, we should probably put some money in the budget for the, for a website.
Oh, yeah, good point. That's, I'm estimating that's probably going to be about a thousand, probably three thousand probably by the time you get all your advertising, all this costs. Thank you, I thought about it during the meeting and forgot during the...
Well, then the point...
It's a lot of total thirteen thousand to set aside.
Do we want to adjust then things a little bit in the mail rate in order to keep seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, we can still keep it, we'll just offset landers by that.
Yeah, okay, okay, no problem.
Well, it's just taking it, instead of taking it from our current reserves.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I'll make that recommendation that we set aside the thirteen thousand dollars, and we...
I can stick for one.
Recommend to administration that we look at option two to a form of bylaw.
We need to specify what that thirteen thousand is.
It's not to be set aside, it's to be included in the budget.
Yes.
Thirteen thousand dollars to be included in the budget, ten thousand dollars which is used for...
Civil care initiatives?
As...
Three thousand dollars for public websites.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Thank you. And again, I just really would like to publicly thank Noel for her work. She, she really put through in the last couple of days on this mail rate stuff, and I, I don't know whether I would acknowledge what she's done, so thank you.
Well, post on, thanks to Noel, we appreciate her work.
But I would, I would add, add something to that. To every staff that we have, there's always a good administration staff that oversees it. And Jeff and Marion, I think that your support to our staff is tremendous, and I, I pass that on to you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, community gardens. Do we want to get ahead of ourselves a little bit and make sure we extend now before we...
I don't know, I thought you extended a quarter too.
Did you?
When did thirty, thirty?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Who was it, Jill? Eight-thirty.
It's giving an eye on the problems over here.
But we won't, we won't be done in five minutes, so...
Do you want to sleep all day tonight?
I'll, I'll, I'll just move, we extend till nine and we should be done before that.
Uh, yeah, we're going to zip through this.
Okay. No, we, we don't have to go till the end, the end time, but just so we don't have to do that again. I'll move, we extend till nine.
Okay. Community gardens. Oh, sorry, yes, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
All right.
Uh, so going back, community gardens.
Yeah. Just so that we can zip through this one fairly quickly, can I just take that to communities and will to discuss that and bring back recommendations?
I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, I think...
Marion, did you have something to add?
Um, in this here, we actually have a recommendation.
Oh.
That this should really be community-driven, and so maybe the community and will are great, it's a good place for it to be taken, but maybe they have an idea of volunteers who would like to take this on rather than bringing it back to council again.
Okay.
If they can find some volunteers to make it happen, the infrastructure's in place.
That's what I'd like to do, and, and, and I probably want to maybe have a little discussion with you with, you know, what is in place and, and have we had any, any requests for branding this year and things like that.
We've only had one request, just yesterday or today.
Okay, yeah, so if, if, yeah, if you want to take that, communities and will, then we'll...
I think that's fantastic, thank you.
We'll see if we can find somebody to, to take that.
Next item, council biographies, this one's really simple. We had voted earlier that we would like to put biographies on the website.
I don't see that on my...
Is it seven, three?
Seven, seven, eight, three.
Yeah, oh, okay. Somehow it didn't show up on my...
Didn't show up on my agenda. There's no, there's no background or it's just on the agenda?
Just on the agenda, yeah, there's no background.
Oh, that's where you...
There's no, there's no attached on...
And then, so you have to go back to the agenda.
What kind of a background do you have?
Well, okay, let me clarify, there is a background, but it's just in your background.
Oh, no, but I mean, what kind of a biography do you want?
A biography.
So it's, it's... Marion, would you like to address that, please?
This was one of the items that came out in a strategic plan, that council would like to see their biographies on the website. So I don't know what kind of biography you'd like to see. Whatever you would like to have out there is what, we will put it in a common template sort of style, but whatever you would like the public to know about you, that's what we'd be glad to put up on the website.
And it will not look alike from one council to the next, and that's fine.
Yep, that's, it's just, it's just so people have an opportunity to be able to get to know us a little better.
Exactly right.
If you're looking at that.
Okay, when do we want, when do you want that?
By next month, we should have them. Next CCW.
Next CCW?
I think so.
Okay.
If you will just email them to me and we'll associate them.
Do you get some samples for us that we might be able to work with?
Really?
I will send you mine.
Okay, send me yours, that's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
It's not a branding game, it's just...
It's for your law.
This is going to be about who you are, who you are.
So if you would just email them to me and then we will put them into a format to be able to put up on the website. And before I put your individual ones up, I will email it to you and have you approve it, and then I'll add my comments.
So are you going to edit them a little? Are you going to put your biography up too?
No, I'll just put mine.
Do you have our pictures?
We do have your pictures.
Okay. Okay. All right. So seven B, Parks and Recreation, pool staffing. So this one here again is a great question.
I, I find it quite interesting that we only had, we only had eight applications, is that what it is? Considering the, the need for pool staffing, considering we need eight staff members, and considering we only have eight application, it becomes an obvious decision that we will make an exception regarding the fact that there are three sisters in the same family and move ahead without any further complication.
I think that's the direction that I would like, we don't really have a choice, so would you like to...
I would recommend that we approve the hiring of the pool staffing as, as designated in our package.
Would you like to put the names in the motion, please?
Uh...
Just require it.
Okay.
It's Madison.
Cassidy, Madison, and Sadie.
And Sadie.
Is that the Nards?
Yeah.
These are Jesus?
What, what's her name?
Doors.
Yours.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, who was David Pillman?
David Pillman's our works in our Parks and Recreation department.
He replaced Greg at the pool.
Be on that, you want to...
You would be Curtis' son.
Curtis and Madison's son.
Always a Curtis.
Yeah. Any further discussion on the recommendation? All in favor? Thank you. Seven C, the one we've been waiting for all night, right? So, so what this one basically boils down to is medical marijuana production is being legalized, and if we don't have some kind of a bylaw in place, it, it can happen without us being able to have any control over it. So one of the solutions to that that's come up is for us to specify and give the details in exactly, define what it is, and then not put it into any of our bylaws and in effect what we end up doing is prohibit it again.
Okay.
Challenge?
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, so further, can any, I mean...
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, but I mean, what's the best?
That's, that's the recommendation that's been made to us at this point as to what we can do to stop it.
So can I ask administration...
You can ask whatever you like.
Has, is this legal advice to us?
It is not, there's some legal quotes in here.
Yes, I saw that.
From references of other situations. The advice comes from our planners on how to deal with it within our own line as well.
All right, so as you know, the city of Calgary as, as... has put it in their land use bylaw. And to zone that industrial, commercial, like, commercial away from the city code. I am sure they've got legal advice plenty. So that's why I'm wondering, is that wiser to have something in place that would have more legal weight?
Council bedroom?
Can I suggest we go to AUMA and ask for their sources of Aspen, what they would do.
Well, it's at AUMA that that was presented to us in Edmonton.
Yeah.
But they might have some further information on it that they have in Calgary for us to look at.
That's what I presented to the mayor's and we focused in Edmonton.
What are other communities doing? And are they suggesting that they don't want to do it, or they don't want to include it?
There are many communities that are open to the idea because
Couple of them that are encouraging it.
They are encouraged, yeah, because there is tax dollar to be had, right? It's business.
I don't, I don't know that, I don't like to see it here in our community, but in fact, I wouldn't want to see it in our community.
But because it is a legal requirement, rule of province, unless you are prepared to challenge it in court. And in principle, you would have, you would be.
Are you saying that we have to allow it?
No.
No, that's what I'm saying.
We have to have a bylaw.
Okay, so what, what, Mary, did you want to say something here first before I? Um, basically what happens is if you don't have anything in place, then somebody can come in and start one. And you're, you're, now you have it. So by being proactive, you can effectively prohibit it without prohibiting it, because you can't prohibit something that is legally allowed.
So we have a between conditions.
We can't, yeah, we can't, we can't override federal provincial law. But we can make it miserable enough that you wouldn't want to do it.
So how miserable would it be under the requi, under the proposal that is given to me? Maybe I don't understand the background.
Okay, what would happen is if we were to address the definition in the bylaw, this is my understanding. We were to address the definition in the bylaw, we, we have identified it as a use, but we have not put it in any zone, so therefore it becomes prohibitive. If an applicant were to come and want to put that in the community, they would have to apply to council for a zoning change. And the zoning change they would require, the application would have to say where in the zoning they would like to have this type of operation. So um, maybe it would be under direct control or something like this. But what I was going to suggest is if, what I can do is draft an amendment or have them draft an amendment to our land use bylaw, and I can send it to legal for advice, and then, or even before, I could ask a question. I have not contacted legal because every time I call, it's a five hundred dollar bill.
I understand.
I try not to do that very often.
I understand.
But if council wants to proceed with something in the bylaw, then yes, I would contact legal with us.
I almost feel to protect ourselves, if we have something legal in place, my fee five hundred dollars will stand.
Okay, we got something from the other department.
I know that last year, there was a request made in the county, that was brought up at the county council meeting, where somebody asked a councillor to bring it to the table about making it permissible there. So I think if we put our heads in the sand and say this isn't going to be the issue here, we're going to be in trouble, and we'll end up with it in town at some point.
My curiosity, do you think we know what happens to it? I mean, do they have to, like, if they have a, you know, a facility somewhere, do they have to?
I'll, 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 I'll send you some stuff on it, it's a long process.
I'm just, I'm just curious, but, you know, you know what?
No, they, 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 they have the people who have, have a permit for it.
They have a license. So it could get into our community.
Yeah, so I, I, I would like to, if somebody would like to make a recommendation to.
I'll put a recommendation, I'll put a recommendation that administration draft a bylaw and have it reviewed by legal regarding the medical marijuana production operation in our town.
Can you be specific, do you want me to draft a bylaw regarding it, or do you want me to draft a bylaw to strictly prohibiting it within these?
No.
Let's be clear on what.
I believe is to.
Prohibit?
Prohibit.
Prohibit.
With intent.
With intent, yeah.
Like prohibition. So, yeah, so we zone it out, like, put it under a direct control zone that we don't have, or?
I think that's basically the idea.
Can we?
Right?
Can we draft a bylaw to prohibit something that the government has approved?
That's, that's what I will investigate, but I want to do, I want to be clear what I'm investigating.
Right.
So it's a little bit like prohibition.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe we know the answer. Maybe we know that we can prohibit.
Well, that, that, that's, we were told at AUMA, was that we can't prohibit something that's permitted, but we can draft a bylaw that effectively prohibits it without.
Oh, okay, that's what you're saying.
You're not going to prohibit.
No, you cannot prohibit something that is.
Something federally regulated, but you can effectively prohibit it within your land use law.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, as I look at my tablet, it says here, Alberta addressing the dangers of grow-ups. Steps will be taken to help protect the health and safety of Alberta and communities across the province. Albertans and communities across the province. Marijuana grow-ups pose a real danger to our community. Alberta is leading the way to ensure health and safety and awareness and help protect our communities. Now, that's from Jonathan Dennis, Minister of Justice and Inspector General.
Yeah, but the way to protecting is by having a by.
Well, I'm not wondering if we should contact these people to help develop our, our bylaw, because it looks like they, they've got to flip the door already.
So, so what they're, what they're getting at is in some of these grow-ups where there's been uh, significant damage to rental properties, and so putting in the regulations of what kind of detection, notification, disclosure, environmental impact, blah, 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 goes on with those properties before they can be released back to the public, that they effectively get condemned. What they're proposing there, again, they're going to run into the same, if they, if they went to prohibit it in Alberta,
Local underground.
It, it's a federal law, they can't prohibit it.
Medical use, the medical.
The medical grow-ups, yep. So I, I, we have a recommendation on the table?
Well, I still think there's sources out there besides our lawyers that are, that are almost free of charge for, for some information.
Well, I'm sure.
Well, I think those sources would be used in the helping of the drafting of the bylaw, and then she takes the bylaw to, administrator takes the bylaw to illegal. That's what, that's the normal process for doing it. She's not going to legal to ask them to draft the bylaw.
No, because that would be too expensive.
So on that basis, all in favor? Thank you. Eight, strategic plan report. Has everybody had an opportunity to review this?
Yes.
Uh, this is just for information purposes, to let you know where we're at on, on our process there. And to make sure that administration's keeping us working towards what we said we want to do. Any comments?
No, this is just for our information.
Yep. All right, we need to go in camera, so if you have a motion to go in camera?
My motion in camera.
All in favor? Thank you very much, Corey.